Good morning. I'd like to call the Wednesday meeting in August of the State Board of Education to order, and we have three board members appearing remotely. Michelle Dombrowski, Jim McNeese, and Jim Porter. All other board members are in attendance here in the boardroom, and we have no known guests. This morning on the agenda, we're going to add two items, and they will be, we talked a little bit about them yesterday, they will be the reopening plans for the school for the blind and the school for the deaf, and they will be presented today for our acceptance. And these will occur as items number seven and eight, following the Kansas Early Childhood Update, and then we'll take a short break. So then we'll conclude this morning with our high school graduation and post-secondary credentialing. And we think that'll begin about 11:00. Of course, you never know. So any other changes to today's agenda? If not, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Okay, Ben Jones approved, Deana Horst second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Abstained? Okay, that'd be a nine, zero, one. Okay, the first item for today's agenda will be to act on the Professional Practices Commission. This is revocation. There's just one case, and Scott Gordon is going to present this morning. So Scott, welcome.
Yes, 20 PPC 18 is the case brought before you. It is a default case that the Professional Practices Commission heard just last week. I think the initial order sets it out fairly clearly, but if there's any questions you all may have, I'm more than happy to address them.
Okay, are there any questions for Scott on this particular order? Don't see any hands raised by Zoom. Deana Horst?
I move that the Kansas State Board of Education adopt the findings of the Professional Practices Commission and revoke professional teaching license in 20-PPC-18.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second? Steve Roberts, Ben Jones, did you have a?
No, just to make sure.
Okay, all right, very good. Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second to revoke this particular license. All in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, that's a ten, zero. I'm getting a little glare on the screen, but this one will be better for me to watch. Okay, all right. Thank you, Scott.
Appreciate that.
And you are up for the next item also, which is going to be looking at the proposed amendments to the Professional Practice Commission regulations. And as I remember, this has been in process for quite some time.
It has, at least since 2017. I think was the first time that I shared with you a draft. Then there were some statutory changes and other considerations that I think have finally gotten us through enough loopholes, but still be able to accomplish the goals of the State Board of Education. And the case that we just brought before you, that you just voted on, candidly, I brought that when I did because I think it's a very good example of why we're wording certain things the way they're worded in our regulations. I will not go through every single little change that we're going to be proposing, or I'm proposing through the regulations, because you've already seen them several times. So this is just kind of the highlights of the highlights. One difference will be, previously you have seen 91221A. That's what we've talked about for the past several years. I decided that since we're taking this section through anyway, there's a few other parts that we wanted to get corrected. And by "we," I mean the Professional Practices Commission and myself. Functionally, this is the way the PPC has been operating for at least the last eight years, so we decided to make the regulations match that. Specifically, at 91221A, this is the regulation that's been in place for decades, you're all very familiar with. The main difference now is I'm splitting 221A into two different regulations, 1A and 1B. 1A will specifically deal with the opportunities and the basis by which you may deny someone a license. And what has changed between A and B is that subsection A says, "Any license issued by the State Board may be denied for any of the following reasons." And then you have those reasons listed out there. What you may note is that I've removed the language for misconduct or other just cause. That was what the statute that was passed a couple of years ago, 74120, said, "No licensing agency can use that kind of generic language." Okay, fine, we won't use that generic language for the denial. But all of the other basis by which I would anticipate you may want to deny a license would still be there. Yes? Sorry, I defer to Chairman Bush, sorry.
Anne Mall?
I was just gonna say, while we're here, I was reading the 1A, and the "may be" has been crossed through, so I don't know if we crossed through too much there, but it doesn't say "may be" on the draft version I have.
I think what you're referring to is, there's a reason for that, and that will be included in 1B, and I will tell you that they will be corrected before the final version actually gets sent.
It just says, "Any license issued by the State Board denied any of the following..."
What page are you on, Anne?
I'm sorry?
She's referring to page 175.
Yeah, so anyway, it just, it doesn't read like a complete sentence, so...
That's an error that we'll fix. I see what you're referring to.
Yeah.
Yeah, it will read that the issued by the State Board may be denied for any of the following reasons. That'll be corrected. Thank you. And then the other reasons that I listed, these are the same reasons you've seen several times. Conviction for any of these offenses, pleading not guilty, no contendee, or guilty, or otherwise having been found guilty of any of the following offenses. Regardless of whether sentence is imposed, as I've explained before, that's because other states use different phrases, and I want to be able to capture and be very clear that if you get a suspended deposition of a sentence in Missouri, for example, it doesn't matter if you ever served that sentence. In Kansas, we consider that to be a conviction for that offense. And then the crimes are listed there. Nothing really has been changed. We did clarify that any crime involving a child under the age of 18, other than the accused, that means we're not concerned with if you get a, if you were caught in college or high school with a minor in possession, that's not what we're talking about when it's a crime involving a child. What we're talking about is if there is a child victim involved, or potentially a child victim. Then these are the same offenses and same descriptions you've seen for years. I will say, the biggest thing, biggest change that we've been proposing for the past several years is number four, engaging in any behavior that can reasonably be construed as involving an inappropriate or overly personal and intimate relationship with, conduct toward, or focus on a student. This is essentially our grooming language. This has been vetted. I've shared this with KNEA, I've shared this with KESB, they've shared feedback, I've shared this with other state licensing agencies. In other states, they use very similar language. The purpose of this is to try to eliminate some of the ambiguity as to whether or not, well, is this, is this something that's bad enough to warrant revocation or denial of a license or not? And we want to codify it and explain that it absolutely is. Moving on, basically the summary, the references to revocation, suspension, or censure, that has been taken out of 221A, I'm putting that in 1B. I do believe that this new language will be in compliance with state and federal law. 20 U.S.C. 7926 is a provision under ESSA that says, "State education agencies must have policies and a way of enforcing..." I'm going to summarize this because it's rather lengthy and very wordy. The idea behind that part of the federal code is to prevent someone from assisting or in any way helping someone get a new job in education if they have probable cause to believe that they've had any kind of sexual activity with a student. And there are exceptions that I can get into if you really want me to. It doesn't count if that, if you have probable cause as an administrator, you've informed law enforcement or social services, then it's fine. We don't have to enforce anything. The U.S. Department of Education has made it clear that they will not, they just want to make sure that we have some policy in place. They're not dictating what that policy is. And again, working with and talking with other state education agencies, the changes that I'm proposing in 91221A and 1B, I believe will be fully compliant with that. So that's another important reason why we want to get these regulations changed. And I know one of the concerns, the last time I brought this up, was, well, are we weakening our protections for the profession and for the children if we remove this for misconduct or other just cause? I don't think so. I think we can still protect the children and the profession using the language that I'm proposing. 91221B, it starts on page 181. This is a new regulation that is essentially going to be a repeat of 1B, except two very important things. We're talking specifically about those that already have a license, and so I believe by state and federal law, we are allowed to have the generic language, the catch-all, if you will, of the misconduct or other just cause. So it's still there. I get this question all the time. Well, what is an example? What does it mean by misconduct or other just cause? A teacher taking photographs of a nine-year-old girl where she's wearing black tights, every time she bends over, he takes a picture with her cellphone, that's an example of misconduct. And that's exactly why you just revoked someone's license about 10 minutes ago. There's been no criminal conviction in that case. That individual is currently charged with stalking. Candidly, I would, there's, I can't predict that someone would ever be charged with stalking based on that kind of offense, right? It's just, I didn't know if they were going to be charged with stalking. Trespass could have been potentially a criminal charge. So that's why I would say, and why that particular complaint was filed as misconduct or other just cause. But I think that's important, to leave that in as a grounds for suspension or revocation. And I think that you absolutely have the legal right to take that kind of action. So that is left in at 1B. On 91222, this is something you have not seen before. There were some processes that were written into regulation about 20 years ago that I don't know that they were ever followed. They certainly have not been followed since 2012. So it changed that the only role of the secretary is to keep an accurate file of all votes, official acts, and the proceedings of the commission. That is the secretary's role. Previously, the secretary would have to take the idea of a complaint to the chair of the Professional Practices Commission, and then the PPC would actually consider the facts, and then authorize the person in my role to file the complaint and start that process. Working with the PPC, I could tell you that that would be highly ineffectual, and I don't, I don't understand how that would work. We've tried different models over the years. I think the model that we have now, where as a complaint is just brought to the PPC, and they hear it like a judge and jury, I think works well. And so, again, this is an example of just trying to change the regulation to comply with the way things are actually being done. And candidly, over the past eight years, I've only had one person question why we operate the way we do, and once it was explained, that complaint went away, so... 91225A, this deals with the manner in which complaints are written. Originally, there was a requirement that we had to include the last known address of a licensee or the applicant actually in the complaint. I'm not sure why that's necessary. I candidly don't like including that in a public document, and that's why it always gets redacted. And so we're just going to remove that from the requirement of being in a complaint. We are required by other parts of the regulation to mail it to the last known address anyway, so there's no reason to include it actually in the body of the complaint. The other removal is the requirement that anyone files a complaint, if there are documents within our possession, and I say "ours" because it's usually me, we have to attach those documents in with the complaint. Sometimes this gets very tricky, because there may be police records that are not public record yet, or it may be pictures of text messages between a student and a teacher. And anytime you attach something to a complaint, that becomes part of the public record. And so usually I would have to redact those, or I'd have to jump through some extra hoops to have those protected. I think it's easier and probably more appropriate to remove that requirement of a written complaint and just say, "Make it available whenever they ask for a hearing." As soon as someone says, "Yes, I want a hearing," or "I want to see what these documents are you're talking about," they'll get them, and I'll mail them directly to that individual. Again, just trying to make it a cleaner and, candidly, a better process for those that I've filed a complaint against. The other change that I'm suggesting in 91225A, this is on page 188, yes?
Scott, we have a question. Jean Clifford?
I just had a question. Does this cover non-student children activity?
Yeah, if you're referring to, if we find out that a licensed individual has had any kind of activity, inappropriate relationship with any child? Yes, no, I would think that'd be misconduct or just cause.
Okay, but I just wondered, because students seem to narrow the category of protected minors from...
I can make that change and make sure it doesn't say "student" anymore if that's, if it's in there.
Do you think, if you think it's needed? I just wanted to not give any loopholes there.
I don't know that we have, I mean, there is actually, okay, there is engaging in any sexual activity with a student, so that is one of the basis. The difficulty is, and yeah, we, I understand the point, but if you're 16 years old, you can have sexual activity with anybody you want that's above the age, that's 16 or older. So if you are a 50-year-old man or not a 50-year-old adult, you can have sex with a 16-year-old child, so long as that person's not a student. If they're not your student, if they're not a student in your building, you can go forth and you do you. That's not prohibited by law. I don't know that you would have a basis to take that license away. I don't know if you'd want to or not. Because that person would be a student regardless of age, that would make that a registrable sex offense. That's a felony. But if you're saying that you want those protections to apply to all children and not just students, then we, I can certainly, I'm not opposed to it, but...
Isn't there some kind of a law that, or is it just a student in your own building? Because it can be over 16, but is that a student in the teacher's own building if they have a sexual relationship?
That's right. If it's, if it is a student, I think the statute, I think the criminal code just refers to it as a student. I don't recall if it's, I'd have to look. I don't recall if it's your student or a student in your building, kind of like the mandatory reporting law, that applies only to students within your school.
And student in the district.
For the, you mean for the mandatory reporter or the criminal offense?
Why don't you get clarification for that for us for next time?
Sure.
Yeah, and we'll get clarification on that for everybody.
Can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Let's see, okay, I was on 225A, just talked about that, I believe, yes. Also, what I'm proposing is, whenever we have a surrender of a license, currently, someone could voluntarily surrender their license and make it very clear, "I don't want my license. I understand what the State Board's going to do. You're going to take my license away. You're going to inform everybody that this occurred." Okay? Currently, I would have to wait and take that to the Professional Practices Commission before I could take it to the State Board. What I'm proposing is, in that case, if it's a voluntary surrender and the complainant, whether it's me or someone else that files a complaint, is satisfied with that form of the complaint, or that form of the surrender, it doesn't have to go to the PPC first, it can just go straight to the State Board of Education. The reason for that is, candidly, unnecessary delay. If somebody voluntarily surrenders their license in July, but I don't have a PPC hearing scheduled till October, I wouldn't want them licensed for the, for an extra few months.
Scott, is there any possibility somebody might come back later and ask that they've had their due process rights denied and...
They'd try. They'd be wrong, but they could try.
Yeah. Okay. Just wanted to clarify.
Now, if it's, if the regulation makes it very clear that a voluntary surrender will result in you losing, the surrender forms are very clear, in my opinion. Obviously, I'm biased, but it lays out exactly what's going to happen whenever you sign that voluntary surrender.
Okay, thank you.
And then on the hearing procedure on 2222, right now it says that everything must be done according to the Kansas Administrative Procedures Act, but there are certain provisions within your PPC regulations that don't exactly mirror APA. For example, under the Administrative Procedures Act, an initial order would only be reviewed by the next level if someone asked for that to occur, where, as you know, it happens every time, just as a matter of course. So to avoid some of that potential confusion, it's just referring to, if the regulations are contrary to the provisions of KEPA, then the specific regulations would govern how the hearings are conducted. Again, that is a procedural matter that I can imagine maybe three people ever care about, and myself and the hearing officer are two of them. It just clarifies it. And then the, on B1, currently it says, "Any person having a substantial interest in the outcome of the proceedings may ask for a continuance." I have no idea what a person having a substantial interest in the outcome of the proceedings might be. That could be a school district that has nothing to do with the complaint. In theory, it could come forward and say, "Well, I want to get a continuance on this case." I'd like to, it's never happened, but I think it would be important and a good idea to clarify that, too. You have to be a party to the proceeding in order to ask for a continuance. I don't know of any other proceeding by which someone who's not a party would have a basis to say, "I want a continuance." So just trying to change that and make it cleaner. And then finally, on 2225, the decisions, it originally says that the PPC could dismiss the complaint outright, and I'd like to change that to clarify is that a complaint may only be dismissed if it's based upon an allegation of breach of contract, that the PPC may decide to not impose or to recommend no discipline, which, as you know, they do all the time. That's not the same thing as dismissing a complaint. And so, again, it's, I don't think the PPC has ever tried to outright dismiss a complaint in the past eight years, but I'd like to clarify the regulation to explain that. If there are any other questions, I'm more than happy to try to answer them.
Hey, board members, Steve Roberts has a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Counselor. Would you, would you state that you're satisfied that there are plenty of appropriate checks and balances for those falsely accused of taking sexual liberties? I mean, I want to go on record to say there's nothing more vile than taking liberties with a child, but there are occasions when someone's falsely accused. Do we have those protections for those individuals?
I believe so. There's two levels of due process that someone has. Well, candidly, three, if they wanted to appeal to district court. You've got, first of all, my discretion to decide whether or not to file a complaint depending on the sufficiency of the evidence. And I would tell you, I've probably got 15 to 20 files back there that you all will never see, because I just don't have sufficient evidence to go forward on them. I've had, I've had those come forward that I just, I can't. The allegations are horrible, right? But there's not, it wouldn't be appropriate to bring forward. So that's the first level. The second would be the Professional Practices Commission, they conduct a full hearing. And as you all are well aware, that is far from being a rubber stamp just because I filed a complaint, right? And then yourselves, you are also finders of fact, and you, conclusions of law, that before anything happens against someone with those allegations, those three levels have to, you have to go through those three levels before a license ever gets touched.
Thank you, Scott.
Sure.
Further questions? Okay, just a reminder, this is a receive item, and we're going to get a little bit more feedback. That'll go to the Friday notes, and then Scott will be back to clarify anything next month before we take action on these regulations. Okay, thank you, Scott.
Thank you all very much.
Appreciate it. Okay, our next item is an update on work to strengthen the Kansas Early Childhood System, and we have Amanda Peterson and Melissa Rooker. Welcome to you both. Glad to have you here.
We are so glad to be here.
And we'll get the PowerPoint and our Zoom folks up.
Which is early childhood?
I am.
That's right. Cool.
All right, welcome.
Thank you. It's great to be here. It's really nice to be able to see all of you. I hope that you are taking good care. We are here to share a quick update on the incredibly exciting work that's going on to strengthen the early childhood system in Kansas. It feels like some time since we've had the opportunity to connect on this issue, and rest assured that there is plenty of hard work that's underway, both to complete the strategic plan that we had originally presented to all of you on, but also to pivot and adapt to the recognition that the pandemic has obviously created new challenges for Kansas kids and their families and the early childhood educators who care for them. I think it's helpful to ground ourselves in reminding, in remembering that we spent a great deal of time and effort in 2018 and 2019 going and visiting directly with Kansans and doing our research to make sure that we could understand on a very deep level the state of the early childhood system in Kansas. And after we gathered all of that data, after we looked at our focus groups of parents, after we analyzed the stories directly from Kansans, after we looked at a huge number of community engagement sessions, it's really incredible that across all of those different data points, we found two things come through really loud and clear. One is that geography really matters. Where you live in the state, the size of the community that you're in, and where you live in that community, which is very often tied to who you are and who your family is, all of those things have tremendous implications when we think about the opportunities that are available for young kids and their families, and also the outcomes that they experience. And second is that very often, young kids are growing up in families where their basic needs, things like food, clothing, and shelter, are a struggle to meet. And we knew all of this even before the COVID-19 pandemic, right? So we know, even though we're still gathering data, even though we're still looking to find information in real time, we know that this is the context that we started with, and we think that that's incredibly important to keep in mind as we continue to move forward and to recognize that the current situation does not affect everybody equitably, that it is really dependent on some of those other factors to determine what you're able to access or what outcomes you experience. We're also really glad to share that the strategic plan, for anyone who might have forgotten, is complete. It's available on the Children's Cabinet website. It is something that is not just sitting on a shelf for the visual. We are carrying it around, we are working with it. It's been mailed to all of you, so you may or may not have already received it, but we are really actively referring back to it to help guide and understand where we're trying to go, because it is something that was created in a really participatory process with stakeholders all around the state. The exciting piece is that we also have funding that's available to support the work of the grant, or the work of the plan. There we go. Kansas, we are really excited to know, has been awarded nearly $9 million annually in terms of implementation federal grant funding. The Children's Cabinet and Trust Fund is the lead agency for this next phase of the grant. That makes good sense, given their statutory role in Kansas. We're also really excited to share that they've hired three new positions to help actually implement the grant. The preschool development grant, this grant is authorized by the Federal Department of Health and Human Services in partnership with the U.S. Department of Education, and it's a three-year grant. So we're in the first year right now. We are expecting and hoping that Congress will continue to authorize funding for this so we can complete the full grant cycle. Today, we're going to zoom in on three particular elements of the work, because it can get, there's a lot going on, and so we want to be able to focus and bring to you what we're working on right now. We'll be talking about, as we get into the start of the school year, some of the pieces that are particularly important as we think about strong transitions to kindergarten and supporting kindergarten readiness. We will also be visiting about some of the opportunities that we have to increase access to quality services and some of the governance pieces that are underway. So first off, the plan obviously is very well, very well aligned with our Kansans-Can vision, and kindergarten readiness is an important piece of that. And we know that the connections that teachers and schools make in the first couple of years, or the first couple of weeks of their relationship with a student really matter when we think about that student's future kindergarten work. And I'm sorry, I'm losing my breath a little bit. There we go. Getting used to the mask, right? So when we think about engaging families, that's really important. And I feel so lucky when I visit with my colleagues from states around the country that you all had the wisdom and the foresight to select a tool for our kindergarten readiness snapshot that engages families right from the beginning. So the Ages and Stages Questionnaire is something that is completed by parents and caregivers. It is a partnership between the school and the parent, and that's really important when we think about the year ahead, because, gosh, that relationship between a school and a family is going to be more important than ever, especially for our young learners, for our young learners. for our young learners, for our young learners. The elementary schools, they partner with parents and caregivers. They implement the ASQ. And all schools are required to do that between July 1 and September 21 of this year.
I'm going to ask a question if I can, Amanda.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Yeah, gosh, I appreciate it.
On the Ages and Stages Questionnaire, so it sounds like the window has widened as far as when folks can do that.
It has, yeah. And that's feedback that you all have probably heard in your communities. What I'm so excited about is that with this new contract that we have in place as of July 1, any school right now in the state has the ability to screen any time between, or any time during the year for any childbirth through kindergarten entry. What we'd really like to see is for schools, whenever they're doing their first enrollment, their first work with a family, to be able to use the ASQ as a tool in that environment, to be able to say, gosh, I was talking to somebody from north central Kansas recently, and they were sharing, you know, when I give the ASQ to a parent, I say, you have been your child's first and best teacher for the last five years. So you should be the person who does the first assessment in terms of informing what this child can do. The wider window, July 1 to September 21 for this year, will, we think, give schools, we recognized obviously that there's a lot going on administratively, and so we wanted to give them a bit more time. We have requested that schools reach out to let us know if they're worried that September 21 doesn't give enough time on the backend. We haven't received a tremendous, we haven't received very much feedback on that question. And we think that September 21 is a good cutoff. We don't want this to be something that drags on and on and on in the school year. And it is really helpful for us for that to be lined up with the count date so that we can calculate participation rates.
Yeah, I would think they'd really appreciate just the extended time. I know I've gotten some feedback that they really wanted the extended time. So I'm pleased to see that it is at least till September 21. But they do have the option to reach out to you if they need to.
Yes, yeah. And we, and I'd invite them to do so as we're determining whether or not we need to make an adjustment there. Something that we'll all have to consider in future years is whether we want to open the window earlier than July 1. As, this is our third year getting this up and off the ground, and we've wanted to make sure that we've got, there's a balance, right? We want this to be a tool that schools can use to establish the relationship with a family on a strong footing right from the get-go. And so if the school is using something else in March and April, and then coming around and saying, oh, also there's this mandate from the state that we have to do in July and August, that's maybe a little less effective than what we'd want. So we're balancing that with recognizing that we want to know where kids are at once they enter kindergarten. But the process of doing the ASQ between the family and the teacher is an important part of everybody getting ready for kindergarten, regardless of whether or not that happens. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, we have an additional question. Anne Ma.
Thank you. Can you explain what's different in the contract? I mean, this.
Absolutely.
And how are we going to measure that it was effective?
So the previous contract was more narrow in scope. It was just for kindergarten students in school-based settings, either public or private accredited settings, and just during that narrow window. Something that we, there has been a tremendous amount of work in the state to expand access to developmental screenings like the ASQ and to use evidence-based tools. And part of why Kansas picked the ASQ is because it's something that you can use birth through the time that a child is in kindergarten. And so you can really have that continuity. I mean, you can imagine a childcare provider or a preschool teacher sitting down with a kindergarten teacher with all of the correct data sharing agreements in place, obviously, and being able to track and really say, you know, this is a child we've been working together. We've recognized that there have been maybe some opportunities to improve in the area of gross motor. And here are some of the things that we've been doing to work on that. And let's brainstorm some ideas for how we can engage the family moving forward.
So the contract is with the ASQ provider?
Yes. So Brooks Publishing is the company that publishes the ASQ. The new contract, there are efficiencies that we can get by having a smaller number of state subscriptions. So for example, the Children's Cabinet uses the ASQ as part of their evaluation plan for their early childhood block grant. Being able to have one statewide contract means that we're not paying for a bunch of additional subscriptions. It also means that we can get a cheaper rate in terms of the cost per screening.
So are we going to be able to measure then how many kids are actually getting this as they go into kindergarten?
Yes. And do you want to speak a little bit about?
I appreciate the question. I think this helps because when you have all the individual contracts, there's a lot of replication of the testing. If pediatricians are using it in their offices and schools are using it in their settings, previous, there wasn't cross-communication, there couldn't be because these were separate accounts. By having the state-level contract, it will help bring more data together and help, so parents won't be asked to do this test, this screening, multiple times. It can be one time that then gets shared by the appropriate parties that need to see it. So more providers, we're not starting with the whole universe, but this is for every school district to use the same contract. We then envision Part C providers coming on board and so forth. We're going to roll this out so that the people who have access to this account can do the screening work they need, but parents aren't put through it multiple times, kids aren't put through it multiple times. So we think it'll be a lot more efficient and cost-effective to do it this way and help us on the research side of things when we are evaluating the type of programs and services kids are receiving and the outcomes that we're achieving. This will help us better evaluate the data that's being collected.
So we can, we'll get data on each school district, like whether or not they actually got every kiddo tested?
We will.
Okay. Thank you.
And something that's, we're going to have, as we entered into the next phase of the contract, we made some structural adjustments to how we get the data that's going to make it much easier for us to actually calculate a participation rate by school. And so that's going to really help in terms of looking at that participation rate to start. Previously, as we've been collecting this data, the participation rate really varies in terms of how successful districts are at engaging with families to complete the ASQ. And so that's, just like when we think about the ACT on the higher end, when you really expand the number of kids who are participating, you would expect the results to change somewhat. And so we've been a little hesitant at the state level to report that data out, but we do know that it's something that's really useful at the local level for districts that have bought in.
Let me follow up a little bit, maybe kind of what Melissa was talking about. So we might have, say, a pediatrician's office or preschool facilities that will be using this tool. I don't know if they are yet, but that will be using and have access to this tool to provide data. And then that data can be provided to the local schools?
Yes. So it's, when we think about pediatricians' offices and medical facilities, it gets a little more tricky because then the ASQ is usually embedded in an electronic health record. And just from a technical perspective, it's a little more challenging to move that. But when we think about a preschool, a Head Start, any of those other early childhood care and education settings, it becomes easier to share that data. And one tool that we have right now that a couple of counties have really bought into is what's called a developmental passport, where just like when you get a vaccination booklet at the beginning of your child's life, you get this passport where you, as a parent, are able to track, okay, this is the date that my child was screened, this is the location, and here are the results. So that then when I go to the next provider, I can share that and don't have to rescreen. But that obviously relies on more work on the parent's end. So this more streamlined system is going to really help with that coordination.
Well, and I would, I would just say that in our plan, embedded in the strategic plan, are a variety of different goals that this will help us meet. So better alignment across the system is a big focus of this, but also easier navigation for parents to access services in the system and the use of data. So we are actually, I'm very involved right now in work to draft a data trust agreement that we can use to set up a board, much like your Department of Education Data Governance Board, that can create a baseline agreement. And then for each use case, we would, each time there is a type of report that we want to share data between state agencies, the partners in this data trust already have the baseline agreement in place and can more easily get the data sharing agreement drafted and signed. So it, the process will be more streamlined to actually be able to connect data from all the separate systems that exist. So we are really excited about what the potential of a screening like this, aggregate data that can tell us how we're doing with our state investments and how we're doing, making progress towards the overall goals that we all share.
Okay, thank you.
So we've been providing a great deal of technical assistance to districts as they get this up and running. We're in conversation with them about how, particularly if you're starting your kindergarten year in a remote environment, or if you're preparing to serve some students remotely, or if you're looking at potentially transferring into a hybrid model. The ASQ for a teacher really is a fantastic tool to be able to partner with a parent to be able to successfully complete that screening. And then to be, it comes with, you know, here are some learning activities that we can empower you as a parent or family member to do at home to work on these skills. So it really does, right from the get-go, model the kind of family engagement that we know is just so essential to making sure that this next school year can be successful. We have also, we have provided districts with an introductory letter to the ASQ from Dr. Watson that they can use if they so choose to be able to say, congratulations on joining kindergarten, here's some of the reasoning behind this initiative. Districts can also take that letter, and if they would rather that come from their superintendent or their teacher or their principal, they can feel welcome to adjust the language and to use it in that way. And we are providing regular live question-answer sessions with the implementation team at Brooks Publishing and regular email newsletters to our Kansas ASQ users with tips and tricks about, you know, here are all of the ways that you can use the ASQ in a virtual environment, for example. So a lot going on here, and we're very excited. Data is due in mid-October, so we're very excited to be able to get that in and use that moving forward. Second, so a really big piece of our work obviously has been recognizing that we just don't have enough early childhood services available in the state, that in many places, slots are really limited, or there are barriers that stand between families and the slots that are there. And that's a really big piece of our strategic plan. A bright spot that we wanted to highlight comes from our partners at the Kansas Department of Commerce. In July, they awarded tax credits to 25 organizations. And these community service tax credits, one thing that we heard, that we hear frequently and one piece that we heard in the needs assessment, is that sometimes communities are challenged to find access to the capital that they need to be able to renovate a building so that it can be an appropriate place for a young child, and so that it can have the appropriate health and safety standards that you would want for it to be a safe place for young children. The Kansas Department of Commerce earmarked $1 million of community service tax credits specifically for early childhood programs and early childhood facilities. So there are a number of projects that are going to be able to use those tax credits to engage in building work. Just a quick note, so the way that one of these tax credits work, if you are in a rural area and if I donate a dollar to your, to your capital campaign, I'm able to write 70 cents of that off on my taxes. So the net cost to me is just 30 cents. So we're pretty excited about this piece. We also, Melissa, would you like to visit a little bit about the State Finance Council?
I would be delighted. So a number of weeks ago, a team was put together to create a work group focused on education needs to help give guidance to the Spark Committee, the Strengthening People and Revitalizing Kansas Committee, that is, the creation of the governor to deal with the investments that we as a state use. There is, you know, where Department of Ed got money from the CARES Act that was directly allocated to you, other departments got, through certain line items in the federal budget, got increases in the CARES Act. The state got over $1 billion of money to be invested as we see fit. And so that was money that, basically, the Office of Budget and the Governor's Office had to make some decisions about in connection with the legislature. But since the legislature's out of session, the Spark Committee was created to help guide, make recommendations on how that money would be funded. So they put together a work group on four key topic areas. Public health, education, I think, the economic development, and broadband connectivity, I think, is, are the four categories. So we, the work group included Michelle Miller from the Department of Education, and then I was invited to join to represent our world of early childhood investments. We had DCF and KDHE, so Department of Children and Families and Department of Health and Environment, created this work group alongside with community colleges and Kansas border regions. So we divided our recommendations into the early childhood, K-12, higher ed. It was determined that because of the round of funding that K through 12 got directly through the CARES Act appropriation and the need to wait for the September 20 count to see where we are with enrollment, with kids on free and reduced lunch program, and all of those head counts that will factor in to the way that the formula works for the appropriations for this coming school year, that we'll wait to see what those adjustments are before, because there will be round three of the Spark Committee. So higher ed has a really kind of jaw-dropping level of need based on how hard they've been hit by the pandemic and all the conditions. Early childhood, we try to think strategically. This is a lot of money to spend in a very limited amount of time. It must be spent, must be out the door by December 30th, checks written and projects completed. So we may, our ask was 9.9 million, just a little over, you can see on the screen, for a trio of projects that will help us address the needs in our early childhood environment. So we've done a lot of surveys, we've done a lot of work listening this spring about how COVID is affecting the early childhood sector. Our package of recommendations is tailored to address what we heard. So number one, we, our workforce is in large part not insured. They work in low-paying jobs with no benefits. So they're working full-time, but they aren't receiving health insurance through their job, and they're not earning enough. Average pay is $9.25 an hour, so they're not earning enough to purchase health insurance for themselves. So we have an agreement. In the public health package of proposals, what got approved was expanded state lab testing and early childhood providers. Anyone working in that, in licensed childcare facilities, can be part of the state testing protocol if they suspect exposure. So we will be able to get in and help quickly address and deal, hopefully prevent hotspots from erupting based on childcare settings. If a childcare worker tests positive and has the virus and has unexpected healthcare costs or other costs, we've created a grant fund. $3 million of this $9 million will be available for grants. It will be administered by the State Department of Health, the Special Healthcare Needs Fund. So they've added this criteria to the special healthcare needs that they'll address. So it's a way of helping address a very big problem of the potential that a childcare worker might be exposed but be afraid to go get tested because of the expense involved. We want to help them deal with that. The second piece is a system of healthcare coordinators for early childhood, not, early childhood care coordinators, to work to advise providers on how they, what they need to adjust about their operation to comply with public health guidelines. So it may be physical changes to the building and the setup, a new, the Plexiglas shields at the drop-off zone, or upgrades like that. It might be staffing issues. They may need to add another staffer so they can spread kids in smaller groups and comply that way. It may be the PPE and the cleaning supplies. It may be extra markers and crayons so kids don't have to share from a common bin, but they don't have the money to buy enough for every child in their care. You know, the coordinator will help identify what factors need to be addressed to operate safely. And then there is a $5 million fund available for them to apply to for financial assistance to. to for financial assistance to meet that criteria. We also, in that fund, will pay for comfort kits for kids that, that can be shared with, with basic supplies and, and activities to help deal with some of the social and emotional needs. Childcare Aware of Kansas is the, the coordinator for that. And then finally, the cabinet will administer a Technology for Families Fund that will work through the early childhood home visiting programs that are state-funded to give those programs grants, so they can then purchase devices, be it hotspots, be it the data to run the hotspots, be it a tablet that a family doesn't have and otherwise couldn't be able to connect to the internet. We'll provide, we have $1.5 million for that fund to help provide families the connectivity they need. We know there's a bigger effort to expand broadband services, so the actual connectivity is being handled through state and county-level efforts, so we didn't feel the need to try and address that. But the stopgap in the meantime is to help families, so we don't lose them this fall if we have to go back to a remote learning situation.
Have additional, another question, Anne Maugh?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, I have several. I wanted to back up to the tax credit thing. In order for any money to show up, somebody has to make a donation.
That's right.
Right, okay. Is there a minimum on that? Like, sometimes it's a $250 minimum before you can get a tax credit? And how do people find out about this, that it's even available?
So, I don't think that there is a minimum of the amount of the donation. The Kansas Department of Commerce has, one piece that we're trying to do is help get the word out to our early childhood care and education community. Here are the types of incentives and small business supports that are available to you as you're operating either your nonprofit or your small business.
So who's eligible? Who could I donate to? I mean, any childcare provider that's a nonprofit, or what?
So, the provider applies to the Kansas Department of Commerce, and there's a competitive process to allocate out the tax credits. So, for example, the Finney County Childcare and Early Learning Network in Garden City was awarded a tax credit to be able to renovate a former nursing facility and turn it into a childcare facility. They submitted that application to the Department of Commerce, and now they go out in their community to solicit the donations.
So, you, can we be assured that all the providers out there know about this?
We've certainly got work to do on that front. But something that we were able to do this year is use our, some of the communications channels that we've developed as part of the strategic plan to make sure that we were sharing this information really far and wide. Secretary Toland actually came to the children's cabinet to be able to provide a preview that these are going to be available, and that there was going to be a pot of this fund that was set aside for early childhood. And I know that they do get a pretty, a pretty strong response in terms of the requests for tax credits. I know that the, the amount requested far exceeds what's available.
And if I, if I could add, I don't think that, that the projects chosen now have to go solicit the, the donor funds. I, I think the point of the RFP process the Department of Commerce has is its criteria had to be in place to be eligible for these awards. So it was a competitive application process, but the projects had to be described and, and far enough along that, that they are things that, that can be put into action. So, it's an annual award process, and we're just extraordinarily pleased the Department of Commerce has set aside, this is 25% of the, the funding they had available, they specifically set aside for early childhood projects.
People have to know, though, that, oh, if I donate here, then some of that's going to go for something I care about.
Well, it's, it's more they'll donate to something they care about, and then they can write it off of their taxes.
Right. But if I don't know, that opportunity's there, does that make sense?
Right, yeah. So, so it very much relies on that local provider saying, if you donate $100 to me, then actually that nets out to $30 after your taxes.
Okay.
We'd be happy, I've got a, a list of the projects awarded and some additional background information.
That'd be good. I'd be interested to know how much money that involved. Could I ask another question about? Actually, I have a question about all, all three of those things, but the, the million and a half for the internet for families. I mean, everybody's interested in this this year, and we're all working on it, and I'm concerned that everybody's working on it, and...
So, we are aware that school districts are trying to do this for their students in, in, let's say, pre-K through 12. We are working with the early childhood home visiting providers, so they deal with the prenatal through five-year-old population. So those providers will work with the families that, that are in their scope, and that, that is one way, and there will be some, some guardrails in the criteria for these grants to be made, because we are acutely aware that duplication of effort does not help the, the bigger...
So that's actually managed out of the children's cabinet?
Yes.
Okay, so they're not necessarily, I'm trying to figure out how families qualify, because I know I'm working with another guy right now who's working with DCF, because a lot of folks didn't know that your, that cash assistance, the TANF money could be used to pay for internet. And so now we're trying to get more emphasis on people who work with low income to say, hey, this is a benefit you could get if you're on TANF. And so, and then you've got the 10 million that was laid out the other day from the Spark money to go to internet, and so...
That's this money, yeah.
That's, but I thought the whole 10 million was supposed to go for internet.
Well, that's, well, that's, that's, right, that's part of the $60 million.
Right.
That, that is for the, the lines, the connections. Ours is for the cellphones or tablets or computers, what, to meet the needs.
For devices only?
The devices, and, and so a device to, if somebody doesn't already have an internet connection that's feasible, we could provide them with a hotspot device. But we are not trying to lay cable with, with our fund. We will work, our grant will be to the provider of home visiting services. And then the provider will work to distribute to the families in their scope of care.
But if they get a hotspot, somebody still has to pay for the service.
And we can do that with this fund.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is really quite similar to when we think about how schools might be spending their CARE Act money right now for their school-age population to get people devices and get people connected to the internet. This is quite similar for our, our population of kids who aren't yet school age.
Okay. Can I ask another question, or if we have time, I can come back?
How much more do you guys have?
Not too much.
Okay, yeah, go, one more question.
The $5 million fund, who applies for that and who administers it?
So that's childcare providers across the state. Childcare Aware of Kansas is the administrator. Kansas Department of Health and Environment is the state agency of record. They have the contract with Childcare Aware that they are expanding to include this particular grant action.
And is that like an annual thing? I mean, we have a certain amount of time we have to spend that?
We have to spend this money. All $9.93 million has to be spent by December 30th.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All Spark money, then?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Fantastic questions. And this is exactly the kind of collaboration and the work that we have been doing among the various state agencies. During the Kansans Can Listening Tour, we heard really loud and clear that Kansans understand that when we think about early childhood, it's a cross-sector, all-hands-on-deck kind of approach. And similarly, as we're thinking about the responses to something like a global pandemic, it has really taken a great deal of collaboration and coordination among the various state agencies to make sure that we can provide the support that's needed. In addition, there's been a, a great deal in our, our first round of CARES Act funding. The Department for Children and Families has administered the HEROES program, which provides direct grants to childcare programs so that they can pay for the cost of supplies or continue operating. The last piece that, and that ties in really nicely to the last piece that we wanted to highlight, that's that we are working to put our, our vision for early childhood governance in the state into action. The Early Childhood Recommendations Panel is a newly-created advisory group to the children's cabinet to help support the children's cabinet in their role. The governor has designated them by executive order as the state early chair, or, or early childhood advisory council under the Federal Head Start Act. The Early Childhood Recommendations Panel is made up of experts from around the state who are direct, direct service providers who are able to serve as our think tank when we have a, a technical question or other work where we need to do some, some deep thinking and work that might be beyond the scope of the appointed body of the children's cabinet. So they'll be meeting monthly. Each monthly meeting includes a Kansans open forum that will look quite similar to folks who have followed the State Board of Education for some time. We, we borrowed from the, the bylaws and the procedures to put that together, and their next meeting will be on August 21st. So all of that information is on the Children's Cabinet and Trust Fund website if people are interested in listening live or in sharing feedback. As we look to what's ahead, we've got a busy couple of months in store. We're working right now on a grant application for $1.7 million of funding from the preschool development grant that will go to local communities. We are also working on materials to help communities support those smooth transitions to kindergarten that we know are so important, and we are continuing to gather information. Do you want to talk a little bit about the Office of Rural Prosperity?
Yep, I will be, I am part of the, the 2020 Virtual Listening Tour that the Office of Rural Prosperity, Lieutenant Governor Lynn Rogers have, have orchestrated. So, last week, we were in north-central Kansas via Zoom, and tonight, we will zoom into northwest Kansas. There will be, tonight, from 5:30 to 7:00, online, you can access through the Office of Rural Prosperity website. But for, then there will be five more of these gatherings, and even though there is a regional feel to the meetings, the, the general presentations are the same every week, so whatever suits your schedule. I think we even have a Saturday appointment coming up. But I'm part of a panel that's talking about some of the issues that they heard about last year. Early childhood care was, was a, a key topic that they identified, so I am very pleased to be part of that process. So we continue to, to take input from the field and listen to Kansans while also sharing back some of the progress we've made.
And we want to continue hearing directly from Kansans. More than 1,400 have shared their story since the beginning of March when we retooled the, the story collection tool that we'd been using as part of the needs assessment. We're using that to be able to identify early issues where families might be able to share, you know, here's the experience that, that I'm having, and that real-time data, I think, is going to continue to be really useful as we continue to, to look to what's ahead. So, if people are interested in getting engaged in this work and staying up to date, the Kansas Children's Cabinet and Trust Fund website has the needs assessment, the strategic plan, opportunities to sign up for weekly email updates. Those weekly email updates are a, a real treasure trove of information and can provide you with everything from opportunities to respond to surveys about what future grant RFP processes might look like, to links to share your story and insights about what Kansans are sharing on a monthly basis. We host webinars every other Wednesday at noon. Today is Webinar Wednesday. If anybody is listening and is thinking about reopening plans and how they can do so safely, I hope that they'll tune in. We'll be hearing from experts at the Kansas Department of Health and Environment as they walk through some of the public health guidance specific for early childhood programs. And we'll also get to hear from a panel of early childhood providers who have been operating continuously since spring, for them to be able to share some of their lessons learned. So with that, if we have any other questions, we're happy to field them. We do very much appreciate the support and leadership that all of you provide in terms of being able to really elevate early childhood as an important area as we both respond to the pandemic and look to our state's future prosperity.
Well, thank you for your update. It's very helpful to kind of keep us up to date on what's going on, and I, as, as you mentioned, we certainly have a real interest in early childhood and what we can do to help support the kids. And, you know, one of the interesting things is, I think we could all learn a lot of lessons from the, a lot of early childhood centers have been open the whole time. So, we could learn a lot of lessons from a lot of folks about what they're doing. I realize the younger kids are a little less likely to contract the virus, but still, they've, they've, the ones I am aware of have done a pretty good job. So, we really appreciate that. I think we have another question, and then Randy may have a comment, too. So, Anne Maugh?
The, the healthcare fund, I mean, I really like the idea of free service for these workers because they are low, you know, low wage. But I'm having trouble figuring out how the 3 million goes through grants and turns into healthcare.
So, it, it isn't trying to be health insurance. It is, if you are a, a worker at a licensed KDHE childcare program...
Okay.
You don't have to own it, as long as you work there, and, and you are eligible to be tested if you think you were exposed to the virus. If your test comes back COVID-positive within the Department of Health and Environment, so it's all HIPAA compliant, we never need to know who this is. The, the Department of Health and Environment will direct you to the Special Healthcare Needs Division. That is an office they have. It's an existing program that helps mainly children with special healthcare needs and their families. So this is a grant that, a fund that's specific to childcare workers with a positive COVID diagnosis who have unexpected healthcare expenses and don't have insurance to cover it. They can, now that you've proven the eligibility has been met, the Special Healthcare Needs Fund can offer, I think we've put a limit of up to $25,000 in these grants because we need, we only have 3 million total, and we want to be able to help people. This isn't insurance to pay for all the care, this is to help offset, you know, if there are costs that they can document, it's a grant to the individual to, to help them cover their costs.
Okay, so the individual gets it. I couldn't figure out who gets the grant money. So, I think I'm sick, I go get tested, I have expenses, I have to pay those first and I can submit for reimbursement?
There are ways, I think the Department of Health can help, and if the preferences, I, I don't know the mechanics, I, I don't want to promise that this is how it works, but I believe they can work with providers and pay those bills if that's the way the individual, but, but they're going to work with that individual to, to help resolve the situation financially to the extent this fund can do that.
Okay, and how have we gotten this information out to all these workers so they know this is a benefit?
This is brand, like, we just got approval a week ago, so we are working on it. But we have a network, the licensed providers in the system are, KDHE can communicate with them.
Okay.
So, they will be working on that. We will use our webinars, our email, our social media, we, we will be sharing this information. Our, our process is under, it, it, it has been submitted for approval, we can't just do these things, the, the recovery office has to sign off. So, once we get formal approval, we can move forward with things.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ben Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the work that you guys are doing. I've been very supportive of this from, from the get-go, and you've educated me a lot, and I'm really excited about the tax credit piece. I've seen it work very successfully. Several projects in the Hutchinson area has utilized it, regardless of background, and it's good to see that it's going, because I, when we retrofitted a church, it's still a church, but they retrofitted half their building to be our childcare center because they didn't have one in Sterling. And it cost $500,000 to retrofit that building, and it was ADA compliant for a church, but not for a preschool. I mean, the costs are almost prohibitive to get into that business, and I know it's something that you heard. So to hear that, those projects and Secretary Toland doing that, I applaud Commerce for, for really stepping out there and, and for your guys' work on that. I want to get that publicly and the support. That, that is, that is, that is key to rural Kansas and how to operate, and, and I'm looking forward to expanding that and, and getting those facilities operating, because early childhood is a killer for a lot of parents, especially if you're dual-working, and, and we've been dealing with that for, since March, where we've had schoolkids not in school for, since March, and parents trying to figure out what to do with childcare, and all those daycare centers were already full previous to March, and how are they handling childcare? And that was a challenge, and it really opened up that, that, that avenue, and so I appreciate the work on that and, and wish you the best going forward.
Thank you.
Commissioner has some comments?
Thank you, Amanda, Melissa, for all your work. And I, I want to just tag on, on to Ben's comments. You've alluded to it, you've spoken about it, but I think maybe outside of athletics, okay, which everyone's one, whether it's college or high school or pro, the, the biggest questions I get are, I don't know what my school's going to do, and that's because they're, they're watching the virus, but I can't make arrangements to work or not work and, because I don't know if I'm going to be in a hybrid or remote. And so just kind of talk more about what you're hearing as you go on Zooms like you talked about with Lieutenant Governor, and then what could the response be even outside the cabinet or our agency relative to Spark funding, or maybe additional funding that may or may not come from the federal level? Just how do we help parents in this unknown, and we could be in and out of environments? And as Ben said, we don't have plentiful childcare, right?
I, I think we both have thoughts. If I may, there was a great article... If I may, there was a great article last week in the New York Times about how we, as a country, approach this as if it's this great dichotomy that early childhood is one thing, education is another, and that we really have to get better about blending the two and thinking holistically at all ages, because we know children learn at astronomical rates when they're, you know, birth to five in that age range, so every environment needs to be a rich, high-quality learning environment. But we also know that even school-aged children, parents need to rely on the fact that they have a safe, stable place during the day so that they, as a parent, can go and do their work. And so this is not an either-or, it's not binary, it's not a separate issue. So I know Amanda's been reviewing plans, I'll give you time to speak, but I just want to highlight, my own home district of Shawnee Mission just put approval Monday night at their board meeting on a plan that will, is available to parents that have over 500 children enrolled in the Shawnee Mission district. It's their staff who need childcare so they can come to work. They have worked with the Johnson County Parks and Rec Department and the YMCA that they already do aftercare contracts with, and they have a program that was approved Monday night for the children of their staff members with kids enrolled in their district to have the care that they need. And so I was just talking to a board member this morning, that's over 500 kids that potentially will have safe childcare during the day so their parents can teach and staff, paras, anyone is available to apply. So that's one example. I know you've seen a bunch of others.
One thing that anybody and everybody could do today is to go to the KDHE microsite of coronavirus resources. So if you go to KDHEKS.gov and click on the big COVID-19 button right there in the middle, there's guidance for families who are seeking childcare, and it's a one-page flyer that's available in both English and Spanish. It outlines the number that people can call. ChildcareAware of Kansas maintains a hotline that is the most up-to-date database of slots that are available in licensed facilities. It also walks through the times when licensed care is not required. So if a child is in an informal arrangement that is in their own home or is no more than 20 hours per week, it does a nice job outlining that. I really appreciate that schools are thinking about this, particularly as they think about their plans for elementary students. I've seen some schools' plans where they are prioritizing, if only a certain number of students can be in the building, they'll prioritize having it be the younger children who might not, or who are not able to be at home alone, and has given thought to, you know, if we've got limited space, we're going to make sure that we're prioritizing children who don't have other places to be. I've also seen a number of districts that are partnering with community partners, whether that's a YMCA, a Boys and Girls Club, another kind of nonprofit, to be able to make sure that there's plans in place for children who don't have another place to be during that out-of-school time. It's definitely, I'm sure, something that we'll continue to work on for the next several months.
No doubt. Well, thank you both for your presentation, a lot of good information there, a lot of exciting information, real moving forward, and the work that you're doing, you're to be commended, so we really, and we appreciate your update. So thank you very much. Okay, yeah, yeah. I think we're going to take a little break before we go to our reopening guide will be for the School for the Blind first, and I'm pretty sure I saw John come in, so, yep, there he is. So we'll take a little break, and we'll be back in about 10 minutes. Thank you. Looks like to me I see Mr. Porter and Mr. McNeese is still on, just not seated yet. Okay, come back together, and we're going to have John Harding from the Kansas School for the Blind is going to come up and present the, his opening plan for the School for the Blind. So, and we will act on this, board members. So, John, welcome. Okay, all three board members in Zoom are back.
I think, John, if you, go ahead, if you take that, that, and bring it to the bottom, it'll shrink it. They've got to be able to see you.
Click on that down below.
Just pull it down to the bottom, it ought to, it ought to spread it out along the bottom. Yeah, there you go. And you can, you can put it there.
Yeah, there we go. Okay, very good. Everybody's there. Okay, welcome, John.
Thank you. My goal today is just to give you an overview of our reopening guide, and certainly I would welcome feedback and suggestions, but I'll just dive, dive right in if it's okay with you. I start out with a quote, I think sometimes quotes can be revealing, and this is from Horace, who said that adversity has the effect of eliciting talents which in prosperous circumstances would have lain dormant. So when I think of that for us, I think about what was dormant before COVID-19, and I think, well, I like to think we were pretty progressive. I think there's always things you can improve upon, and when I think of those things, for us, we've become more proficient at collaborating with each other, we've become more proficient at communicating with parents, I think, and we've certainly become more proficient with technology and thinking critically about how students get access to education and instruction and our role in that process. So those are the things that I think that we've become more proficient at, and maybe we're laying dormant. This is our dates for reopening, and I think this has been shared with you before, but this week is our first week of professional development, actually missing that right now, but they're in good hands, maybe in better hands without me, I don't know, but our teachers are back together, mostly remote, this week and next week. We will do some in-person training, small groups, physically distanced and with masks. We'll have two weeks of remote instruction, and that really was because the Wyandotte County Public Health Department said to Wyandotte County schools, we would really, we don't want you to open up until after Labor Day. I think our preference was, at the time, to bring at least a small segment of students back in person, but we also wanted to respect and honor what the Public Health Department was telling schools. So this was a compromise of sorts, a way for us to continue getting technology out in the hands of kids and parents, setting up remote instruction temporarily, and then hoping that we can open back up September 9th. So we'll have an enrollment day, we just pushed it back to September 8th. It's a Sunday, that's the day that parents come in and fill out papers. They bring all their dorm goods, and we open the dorm that evening, and then we start instruction the next day. So that's, that's our, our plan at present for dates for reopening. This was informed not just by us, of course, we're watching everyone and everybody closely, predominantly the Department of Ed and Navigating Change. Everybody knows what that document is and how it's changing frequently, day by day, maybe. So we've looked at that, tuned in to the webinars, looked at the document, tore it apart, and said, what makes sense for us? And we've also been informed by, as I mentioned, the Public Health Department at Wyandotte County. So I can't say enough about Dr. Aaron Corvo, Dr. Alan Greiner, both have, Dr. Corvo has said, here, call me if you need anything, here's my number. It's pretty remarkable, did not expect that. We've been part of the Education Committee that has been meeting, planning, releasing documents, so we're a part of that, those discussions, and we feel very good about the relationship. If we need help, we know where to go. And in fact, a couple of weeks ago, I had made a request for some PPE at about 11 o'clock in the morning, and by 3 o'clock, my phone was ringing saying, I'm at the gate with your materials, can you let me in? So they're pretty responsive, very impressed with that. We also did parent surveys, we did those April 2nd and June 8th, and said, what are you thinking? What are your concerns? What do you want us to do? I would say the vast majority wanted school to reopen and to send their children back to school. There were, as any school, a contingent that said, I'm concerned about masks, I am a little uneasy, I haven't decided yet, it'll probably be a last-minute decision, and certainly we honor and respect that. But even today, I believe most parents are willing, the vast majority are willing and eager to send them to school. We've also looked at the Council of Schools for the Blind. As a board member of that agency, I talk with superintendents at other schools for the blind across the country, and they share, here's our plan, here's what we're thinking for the dorm, here are the concerns of our doctors. And so we're listening and picking up information from other schools for the blind and sharing our own information. Curiously, they like the Navigating Change document, they, a couple of superintendents said, we like that, and we're using that, and the competency-based pieces are intriguing, too, to the Council of Schools, so we're having discussions about that, what it means for us. But our preference is still in-person learning for our kids because we're, as a short-term, intensive school, students struggle, of course, to learn for extended periods of time remotely. We can engage them, we can work with their parents, we can do meaningful things, but certainly in-person learning is the strong preference for them and for us. I won't read all these things, but if you look at us in terms of the considerations of COVID for our classrooms, for our dormitory and our sports programs, and for our field services, there are different considerations, and I know Board Member Jones had some questions about field service and why it wasn't in our reopening guide. I can address that. But if you look at themes, obviously masks, we're pretty adamant about wearing masks, and I think that's where the doctors have led us, and we're on board with that when and where possible. Of course, there's an asterisk, and in rare instances, a student may have respiratory issues, medical issues which preclude the use of masks, but there'll be exceptions even in our school. For classrooms, cohorting is important for the Health Department in Wyandotte County. They like the idea of keeping kids together, so we are following that advice, and we are using a block schedule to keep kids together longer. I've ordered a lot of individual desks and chairs, as you can imagine, over the years that used to be bringing everybody around the table, now we have to reverse course, so I've got desks and chairs coming back in, measuring six feet apart, how many can we get into a room? Having old buildings sometimes is an advantage. Each of our buildings have windows in those classrooms, which will help, I think. Lunches will be delivered in some cases, we still will use the cafeteria, but spread kids out. We use outdoor spaces, you've been to our campus, the Sensory Garden is a nice space, especially from probably September to late October, at least, and we are offering, you know, onsite and remote schedules. When we built our schedule, we just have another tab at the bottom that says, here's the onsite schedule, here's what it looks like if you're at home, pretty much the same, just adapted. But those are ready to go, no matter what parents choose, what they want. For dormitory, same thing, masks, every student will have their individual room, we will do dinner rotations, so we're not serving kids at the same time, we will not do wrestling, probably will not do forensics, track would be outside, and goal ball, we'll see, we haven't made a decision necessarily on goal ball. But again, we have a 10-acre campus, a beautiful track, and we think that if anybody can figure this out, we should be able to do that with about 40 students and 10 acres in a lot of buildings. So we've remodeled some of those buildings, I hope you get a chance to see some of these when you visit next time, but it'll offer us more flexibility in space. For field services, a little bit different, because when we serve kids in the field, either we're doing that in a classroom in their local district, we might be doing it in the community, sometimes we're doing infant toddler networks in the home. So our plan really is to follow and at least meet, if not exceed, the rules that are in place locally. So if we're serving a student in Great Bend, Kansas, they will have rules about what teachers must do. We will meet that expectation and probably exceed that if necessary. So we're having those conversations internally with our staff, and we feel comfortable that everybody knows what to expect, they have the right equipment, and will be able to keep themselves safe.
John, we have a question. Ben Jones? No? Okay, all right, thank you.
Just from a facilities perspective, like the navigating change, we looked at that for our facilities, what are we doing? We have emergency PPE tubs, so we're trying to keep a reserve and pull that out when and if we need it. We have what we call PermaSafe foggers, that's simply a brand name, that is a disinfectant that can be applied daily. We are hiring two additional housekeepers, two certified medical assistants for screening. Everybody will be screened at the back gate. Our engineer is recommending ultraviolet light and ionization for the HVAC systems in both schools. As you know, we share operations at School for the Deaf. We have windows in every classroom, automatic door openers, and then no-touch water dispensers. So those are some of the facilities operations things that we're looking into. Again, this is our collaboration with Wyandotte County Public Health Department. We have a nurse, a daytime nurse, who's working with the Public Health Department to say, can we get more face shields? Can we get more sanitizer? We're a little bit low on masks, and so she's been introduced to Dr. Corvo and the team there. Our plan has been submitted to the Health Department, they've requested all schools in Wyandotte County do that, and I submitted that plan about two weeks ago. It's essentially the same as what you see. And as I mentioned, a quick turnaround of PPE, and we're part of the Education Committee that had met several weeks. Piper Schools, Dr. Dan Doy, Dan Brungard, I believe, with Bonner Springs, Casey Cape Public Schools, and the Catholic Schools, all were part of that committee. So again, we're doing two weeks of PD for our teachers. What are we, what are we doing today? We're learning about Ames Web, Blackboard Course Sites for a learning management system, we're invested in Wilson Reading, which I think will align with what the state is expecting schools to teach. Our vision assessment and IEP management, we always have a need to do good assessments, where are students functioning and what do they need? We purchased Science Lab Quest, and Microsoft Teles is for our computer science program that continues. We're looking at competency-based education, dyslexia, and of course, all the required PD, we use Infinitek, which really helps us manage that. And then, of course, Greenbush has got fantastic resources for teachers who want more than what we offer. Two weeks remote instruction, what will that look like? Core content, of course, Braille, computer applications, money management, STEM, we'll do some fun things. In addition to the tough stuff, we'll do podcasting and geocaching for kids who like that. We find that if the kids like it, it's much easier to keep them engaged, so we have to have some fun stuff, too. Of course, that's under, underlying that is the social-emotional support, and we're so fortunate to have a social worker who's reaching out to families and saying, you know, again, how are you doing? What do you need? How can we help you? And so I think we're on top of that piece of it. Team teaching, fantastic, our field service, who are super skilled, campus staff, super skilled, are working together to team teach, which is a lot of fun, I think, and we've grown in that, in that regard. Technology for us, such a big deal. Again, it's rooted in access. How do kids get access when they can't see? It's a little bit difficult, as you can imagine, with Zoom, learning management systems, Wi-Fi, how do they get access? It's an opportunity to teach them, there's no one way, there are multiple ways to have access, and if you're low-vision or blind, it just looks a little bit different. But the items on the left are some of the unique tools that we have purchased, made some strong investments in technology to make sure our kids have what they need, knowing that this year is going to be probably in, out, right, back and forth, if we have infections that impact our campus. Again, the social-emotional piece is, as everybody knows, really critical, the same for our families and kids, and I think they're sort of linked, you know, staff, too, have to have trauma training and understand, how do I take care of myself? We've got, fortunately, Jane Groff and Leslie Girard are going to help us out and do some training, kick off the year. Self-care, you know, what do I need to know about COVID? What are, what's the latest on that? How do I keep myself safe? On the student and family side, the social worker, certainly connections to community and relationships matter, and keeping them connected. Self- Self-management and self-directed instruction. This is what's tough about remote learning, is that kids have to internalize that and be self-directed, so we're thinking critically about that. So we're not just having them sit in front of the Zoom six hours a day. That's not going to work, right? We have to help them direct their own learning, and that's through projects that they can do, unique assignments in the home, et cetera. I've often shown this map to you, and I will show it again because it keeps changing. We keep growing our field services. The regions are colors. These are our regions. They don't necessarily match the State Board regions. But the circles represent where our staff live and obviously where they serve. If there's two rings, that simply means there's more than one staff member located there. There's a black circle that's intentional in the lower right-hand corner of the map. We have a staff member who lives in Missouri but serves Southeast Kansas. On the left side is our campus and all the new staff that we've added for campus. So we're stronger in TSVIs, comms, Brailleists, et cetera. And of course, with our Deaf Blind Project Instructional Resource Center, we think we've got a nice team, and it goes back and forth. It's not just either or. These are not mutually exclusive. They share and go back and forth. Some of the new things, again, when you come back to our campus, I can't wait because these are some of the new projects. We have a new playground, a new makerspace. We have a preschool enrichment program, which we started. We have a mobile tech van, which will be delivering technology and STEM equipment across the state. We've improved our dormitory kitchens. When they built the Edlin Building in 94, some of the lighting was not very good. It was flashlights taped to the ceiling, essentially. So we've changed that, and that'll be a huge improvement. Little things make a difference. And then our new wayfinding system is on track. Beautiful tactile maps are coming, low-vision maps, an app connected to Bluetooth speakers. So kids not only can learn these systems, they can advocate for them when they go back home or they go to college. And so, you know, I had this kind of system at the School for the Blind. Why don't we have it here at this college? Can we get that here? That's what we want our kids to be doing. So some changes, and then I invite you to an open house ribbon cutting, September 25th. It'll be outdoors. Masks required, of course, a physical distance, but we will recognize our donors on the private side, community side, who helped make this possible. We'll have our new STEM van out there and showing the community what we're intending to do. And we invite you, and thank you for your support for these sorts of things. But I do want to close. I know there were some questions, and I want to make sure I answer questions, but I thank you for the time this morning.
Thank you, John. Appreciate you coming and appreciate you sharing your plan with us. Obviously, you've got ideas about how you go back and forth between different types of learning, so that's good. And it sounds like your folks are being prepared.
We hope so. You never really know until you get there. But I think we've made, we've prepared our staff and parents as much as we can. Many of them are practicing wearing masks, of course. We see that and we appreciate that. And I think for the most part, parents are supportive of the measures that we're trying to take, screening measures for staff and kids. I do want to mention we have a head start in Open Minds, which is a preschool facility. They have been open, and we're certainly supportive of them, but they're separate from us in a sense. You know that they work out of the south end of our Johnson Building. But yes, I will take questions if there are questions.
Okay, great. Ben Jones?
I want to thank the work on this. After our special board meeting, this hit my email about three hours after we adjourned the original plan to review. And I had, I don't know, probably nine or 10 questions that I sent back, reading through it. And you've been very upfront, and it's very well organized, easy access to parents, very clear in that regard. And one thing, I was just talking about field services because that's unique, and our schools are unique. And I appreciate the work that you're doing, and I just have a question for the chair. Are you wanting to take these schools separately or vote on the plans together?
We'll take them separately.
Okay. In that case, I'd like to make the motion that we accept the, or sorry, approve the reopening plan for the Kansas State School for the Blind.
Okay, so actually, we'll accept the reopening guide for the Kansas State School for the Blind in preparation for the 2021 school year.
That's exactly what I said.
Okay, all right. Do we have a second? Janet Waugh? Any additional questions before we vote, and then the commissioner's got a couple of comments? Okay, seeing none, all in favor of accepting the plan for the Kansas School for the Deaf, please raise your hand. School for the Blind, thank you. Okay, that's a nine zero. Okay, Commissioner? Ten zero. I'm sorry. Thank you for catching that.
Thanks. You know, when we were meeting with John and Luanne to kind of set goals, this is even a few years ago. Obviously, we talked about outreach, and you see all that. One of the things I said to them, and I think John will remember this, I said, I really, I see a vision. You could be the Mayo Clinic of the School for the Blind or the School for the Deaf, where I may not get to the Mayo Clinic, but I can be referred to somewhere else and be overseen by that. And John's put together a crackerjack staff over the last several years that have just been really responsive wherever that is. I think you see that reflected in this plan and really a strong community outreach. And so, John, I just want to thank you. These are unprecedented times. But I think, you know, whether kids are on campus or going to be outreach, I think the School for the Blind and the School for the Deaf have an opportunity this year to, if other campuses get shut down, maybe they're open and they can receive some of those kids so we don't miss services with some of our most vulnerable. So just thank you for all your work so far, John, and the entire staff. I know you'll deflect that.
I concur with you. My job is really easy now. It's easy. And I appreciate the board's support. It makes my job so much easier when I can get out there, talk and brag about our campus, our kids, our staff, knowing that the board supports our goals. It just makes a huge difference. So thank you.
Thank you, John. I know the School for the Blind and the School for the Deaf both serve a very vulnerable population, and to provide those services for them is real critical, and you've got a plan prepared to do that. And I'm sure the School for the Deaf will also. So appreciate you coming over and pulling away from your staff today, but we're glad you were able to share the plan with us. So thank you, thank you. Okay, we're going to move for the School for the Deaf, although I know Luanne is going online. So not certain. I know we have to do a... Have to do a new PowerPoint, I'm sure. So Luanne, we...
Okay.
There we go.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right.
And Luanne, you'll need to...
And you can...
Yeah, we need to share the screen.
All right.
And then we'll get the Zoom people set up, too. Okay, this will take just a second. Okay, the screen has been shared. Hey, we are seeing the slide that says Kansas School for the Deaf School Reopening Plan. We see that slide up on the screen.
Are you ready for me to start?
We are ready whenever you are.
All right. Well, good morning to everyone. I appreciate you allowing me to join online rather than coming in person today. I wanted to be able to talk about our school reopening plan with you. And I'm not going to dive in as John did. I wanted to give you a little bit of background of how we arrived to this point and we were able to develop this specific reopening plan. It was definitely a process for us. I wanted to be able to talk about the journey a little bit and give you a little bit of background, what we've learned in the process since March, and what we've gone through over the summer, all of the, you know, quick changes that we've had to make, and the unprecedented times, and so many unknowns. And what we say today could change tomorrow, but we're fully prepared for that. Any changes that come up and ask if and when cases develop, if we have to go back and forth between remote and in-person, we're able to do that. So again, I wanted to give you some background. So some reflection on the continuous learning plan from the spring. We realized that that was a crisis response, and that was something that we needed to do. And we know exactly what did work in that plan and what did not work, and that helped us to develop this new reopening plan. And we were able to not reincorporate the things that weren't successful. For example, staff brought home Chromebooks that were on campus, and they were teaching remotely with students using Chromebooks. We learned that that was not a great use of technology for them, and so we have had the need to purchase 120 laptops so that the staff can be fully prepared to teach either in-person or if we go to remote, they can take those laptops home and use them remotely, as well as pairs and dorm teachers. We'll all have a laptop available to them to use to be able to take home and support students. And in the area of support, we have such rich resources available to us. We did take a look at other schools for the deaf. We looked at local resources, the Department of Health, supplies, equipment, protective equipment. Such a rich exchange of information has taken place with all of those. And then I wanted to next talk about transparency. I know that there is a high level of anxiety, a lot of uncertainty related to this within the community and parents and staff, and what this is going to look like and what's going to take place. There are so many unexpected things. And so I've been continuing to have monthly Zoom meetings with all of my staff, as well as putting articles into the Kansas Association of the Deaf newsletter, keeping parents informed, and just trying to keep everybody informed of the information I have. And indeed, I would share information, and there would be an immediate change. And so I've been trying to update as much as possible and keep those lines of communication open. And I really want to emphasize that I've had a fantastic group of people working with me. My team has been flexible. They've been thinking outside the box. They've been thinking ahead, looking at different possible scenarios and unexpected situations and brainstorming. And so all of that is what has led us to the school reopening plan. Our theme for this year is KSD Strong, and we're getting T-shirts made and so forth for that because we wanted to emphasize that we're all in this together. And so that's where we came up with the school reopening plan so that you just have that background. And so what has been critical is communication and will be critical because that will help to ease anxieties and help people to know what to expect. I wanted to share with you the survey results. We did a parent survey first, and then we did a staff survey, and that was on July 24th, which was very recent. The parent survey was a few days prior to the staff survey, so I wanted to share with you the results of that. As far as the results of the staff survey, it did indicate that 75%, 75% of our staff are either completely comfortable or moderately comfortable in coming back to school on campus. But that result may change because of the reversal of the decision of the four weeks of remote to being both onsite and remote, and I'll talk about that in a few more minutes. The result of the parent survey indicates that 73% of KSD parents had requested in-person instruction for their children. The parents stated that it's the most effective learning environment and the best academic support for their students and their needs. Parents were able to recognize that the school could offer much, could be much more beneficial to their student compared to last spring. Coming in this fall, and back in the spring, it was very clear that the remote instruction wasn't effective. And then I wanted to share with you the parent feedback. We did have 89 out of about 140 parents or families that did respond. And you can see on the graphic here, you know, it's, again, it's that 73% of parents would like for their children to return. And so, obviously, the preference is in-person instruction. And when I say instructional staff, I'm referring to certified classroom teachers, parent educators, and student life staff. And so those are all of the folks that work directly with the students. And I got 48 responses, and that's a pretty small number, but the survey was sent out again after the original announcement of the four weeks of remote learning, and I'll be talking about that in a moment. So as of two weeks ago, the Kansas School for the Deaf was thinking that our only option was to offer remote instruction from September 9th to October 2nd. We decided to revisit the option, and that was the only option given to parents at the time. We were not offering in-person at all at that time. The thought behind that was that we felt as though we weren't going to be fully prepared. But at this point, we are indeed prepared, and we have made plans to put in place different strategies to prevent the spread of COVID-19. We have established a facilities protocol, and so those are the main reasons for the reversal in making the decision to be able to do in-person instruction as well as remote. Our plan has been very well thought through. We've looked at all of our facilities, all of our space that's available. We are a very big campus, 12 acres, with a small number of students, of course. And so we're able to proportionately fit all of those students on the campus with the space and the classrooms. At this time, I know that the larger public schools are really struggling with that. It's much more of a challenge for them. But for us, fortunately, that's doable. That was one consideration. And then, of course, the parent response that they are wanting that opportunity to choose in-person instruction for their students. Many of them are working parents. And so that was another thing that we took into consideration and is definitely doable. We have plenty of classroom and dorm space to be able to maintain social distancing. We're increasing the frequency of housekeeping and sanitizing. We've been able to fulfill all of the requirements for proper ventilation within our facilities. We did look at the ionization devices to enhance ventilation, and at this point, we're at a satisfactory level. All of our supplies have arrived for the personal protective equipment. Two weeks ago, we hadn't received those supplies yet. And now everything is here except for maybe just a few more things that should be here within the next week or so before we do open up on September 9th. We did hire two additional housekeeping staff to be able to increase the frequency of disinfecting. We did order a PermaSafe antimicrobial device, as John mentioned earlier. The exact same equipment. And as he said, we do share operations staff, and so most of that equipment has already arrived. Since we have received a larger number of requests from parents for the in-person instruction and being able to look at all these different areas, we have decided to go ahead and reverse the decision. We have not formally announced that to parents yet. Their understanding is still that we are, is that we are still doing... Their understanding is still that we are, is that we are still doing remote. And so we just did make that decision based on the survey results, the preparation of facilities and the other things that need to happen for us to do in-person instruction. As far as support and resources, you'll see Randy up here on the screen. He has just been so very instrumental in having those, or us being able to attend the weekly Zoom meetings with Randy. That has been so helpful as far as our process and what we, knowing what we need to do to prepare for the fall and getting those updates from him and his team. He's brought in guest speakers and that's just given us a whole lot of information that I've been able to share back with my team. And keeping everyone informed of the latest information and what's happening. So I'm just really thankful to you, Randy, for doing that and appreciate all of the time and effort that you've put into that. Meeting with all of the superintendents. And then the Department of Education navigating change 2020 document did definitely give us some ideas that we hadn't thought of. For example, the grade banding, how to group students in the cohorts have less transition time. That has just been a wonderful resource for us as well as attending the CEASD, which is the National Organization for Administrators for Schools for the Deaf. Attending those meetings and being on their board has been so very helpful. They have had their frequent online meetings and they're covering different topics. How to support students that are low language during this time remotely. Student life, what will that look like when students are back in the dorm? Just a whole lot of information exchange. And having breakout rooms with 30 to 40 people. And all of those, all of that information has been recorded and saved in the CSD archives. There is a student life organization that has been helpful and instrumental in developing what to do in the dorm. We had the navigating change document, but it didn't have the information there or for dorm life and what that would look like in the dorm. And so the response in general from this other organization was that yes, we do need to open up the dorms. We do need to serve those students who aren't able to be day students to be able to continue to do that and what that would look like. How would we handle common areas? How would we handle bedrooms and shared bathrooms and so forth? So the resources from that that you'll see in the document came from that organization. A lot of parents have expressed concerns about their students being in the dorm and how that would look. And so hopefully with this plan, that will put parents at ease and they'll feel comfortable to send their students to be here in the dorm. As far as CSD, they had a multitude of COVID-19 resources that I've been checking and going back to looking for updates. So with all of the support and resources that have been available to us, we are very comfortable in opening school in person. I'm going to go into more detail now about the KSD Strong reopening plan. I believe that you do have a draft of that plan. And so I'm open to feedback and suggestions if there's something that we didn't include or haven't covered in the plan, I would like to hear that from you. I'm going to go over each of the components within the plan now. As we have gone through this process, we've gone through the plan many, many times with the highest priority being safety of students and staff and visitors. And we did make the decision that visitors would be very limited to parents and registered vendors. Because we typically get visitors throughout this year of people wanting to tour the campus. So we're going to put that on hold for now and keep an eye on the circumstances and the numbers. And we'll consider bringing students or visitors back in much later. We spent a lot of time having discussions about onsite versus remote learning and the pros and cons. Looking at the new cases, Johnson County does have a high number of cases here. So considering that, many of our students are from rural areas in the western half of the state. And so we had to consider that as well as the Johnson County area. And so that's, so all of those things are how we arrived at those decisions and being able to offer onsite and remote. Looking at the space again, looking at, making sure that there was enough room to be able to do that. Next, I'm going to talk about content, what's in the plan. We have a very clear, very clear guidance from the CDC, the Department of Health, the depart, all of the guidance that's there related to cleaning and disinfecting protocols. And then considering all of the precautions that need to be in place to ensure that if there is a case, we can reduce the impact as quickly as possible so that students, staff and families feel safe in coming back to campus. We do recognize and we are aware that we need to increase our diligence in these changing times that we're in as far as the cleaning and the sanitizing. As far as the safety of our students and staff, they are our priority. Students and staff. So we're keeping both of those things in mind, safety as well as continuous learning. As far as the reopening of the campus, all of our buildings have been sanitized. We will continue to monitor the necessary safety precautions and make sure they're in place within the plan. And that does include specific steps for cleaning, any sort of surfaces, tables and chairs to be able to protect students and staff from the spread of the infection. We are requiring all employees to maintain safety standards by continuously cleaning and disinfecting their areas. We actually have a spreadsheet in the plan that is very specific about the areas to clean, how often they need to be cleaned, how to clean them. And I believe that that will help staff and parents feel more comfortable knowing that we have specific plans in place and that we will be maintaining that, especially in the high traffic or high use areas. As far as preventative measures, of course, we have the mask and hand washing, social distancing. We are requiring all employees to be screened when they come in. Via temperature checks into the buildings, we'll have visitor protocol, travel restrictions and so forth. I wanted to talk more about masks. I do know in the Governor's Executive Order 2050, she stated that deaf and hard of hearing people were exempt from wearing masks. And we as a school feel as though, yes, masks can prevent, I'm sorry, interpreter error, can create a barrier for non-manual markers to be visible on the face, which is part of ASL. However, we made the decision to supersede that decision and that everybody on campus will be wearing masks. That was a pretty big discussion for us and we feel like that's critical to protect ourselves and others. I haven't received any disagreement to that. Everybody seems to be in agreement that we should be wearing masks at all times. And next, I'm going to talk about professional development. We have had instructors come in and work on curriculum over the summer. And they focus on specific content areas. But this summer, instead, we invested time and resources for staff to come and prepare for, you know, the unprecedented times that we're in for online learning, professional development, what that training would look like. And we want to ensure that when staff come in and they are going through their training, they have the resources that they need. They have the materials, they're comfortable in teaching online and they can, and they have the student management systems there. And so our professional development again will be provided and trained by our own staff. So during the summer curriculum work, they did look at the two different scenarios, completely online instruction or onsite instruction. And so having both as possibilities, we'll be having training related to those. If somebody suddenly has to start working from home, that they're able to do that remotely. They have the resources and materials that they need. We want to develop a plan in such a way that everybody is understanding of that and they're comfortable being able to do that. And we expect that we'll be in and out of the campus depending on cases, depending on the environment. And I've been keeping an eye on the local school districts. We're here in Olathe, which is a big district. And so I've been keeping an eye on that and working collaboratively with that district. We have students that are dual placement students between KSD and Olathe. And so we want to make sure that we're on track with them as much as possible. All of our staff professional development will be on campus in person. And our first day of in-service training will begin August 17th. This coming Monday will continue till the 20th, which gives us four days of training. And that's specified in the plan as well. We're looking at safety protocol, response team, disinfectant measures, transition, isolation procedures, onsite health screening, daily self-screening, cleaning crew protocols, and then instruction. So all of those things will be in place and trained. Again, that starts on Monday. So we have a total of five days of professional development. Typically, we've had four. We're going to have the teachers come in an extra day in place of, in place of in-person enrollment. Typically, we have students or parents come in person and they have an opportunity to visit the classroom and so forth when they're here. And now we've moved to online enrollment and that gives us an extra day for professional development. And that day will actually be on September 4th. And then we will be opening both remotely and onsite starting September 9th. Next, I'm going to talk about communication. Our primary means of communication has been through email, all staff emails, all parent emails. And we just did a revision to our website. And we have a button that says school reopening plan. People can click on that and get updates and information there. And we'll be encouraging parents and staff to be checking that for updates. My preference is to directly send out emails and other forms of communication, but the plan will be on the website again. And then preparing for online, remote learning and onsite learning. We, I feel like we are as prepared as we can be. And hopefully, parents can begin to feel more comfortable with sending their students, perhaps starting with remote. And if things are going well, they feel comfortable with that, sending their students in person. I know that we are a very small school and we have small numbers. The answer is can we do both? Or the question is can we do both? And the answer is yes. The, with the cohorts, it wouldn't be a regular seven periods a day. They would stay in the same classroom half a day, go have their lunch. And we'll have three different periods for lunch according to the number of students so that they can social distance and still be together. So that's less transition time for us. And that's a fairly new concept. And it will look different. We have typically have ELA in the morning, we have math in the morning. And if the teacher happens to have a cohort of students and they're half remote and then they're half onsite. The laptop with the camera will be pointed to the teacher while they're instructing. And then they will have the breakout room via Zoom. And there'll be additional adult support there for smaller groups, which is much more effective for our population and that's what that will look like. And so the big question then is related to the dorm and what will be happening in student life? What's the plan there? Previously, we have welcomed students to come and stay in the dorm based on a criteria. But we've also been flexible with that because of the social needs of the students. And in this situation, we have decided to limit the number of students in the dorm to those who live greater than 25 miles from the school. And so local kids will be going straight home after school instead of participating in any after-school activities. And that's in order to allow those who are greater than that 25 miles away, be able to be in the dorm. And we do have enough room for everybody that we know of right now. We would have one student per bedroom. We have shared bathrooms between the dorm rooms and each, it's like a Jack and Jill bathroom and so they each have their own sink. And so there'll be a schedule of when they're able to go in the bathroom and use the sink and shower and so forth. So they're not in there at the same time. We will be having them just bring in a week's worth of clothes at a time and bringing their clothing home every Friday. And then another discussion was, should the dorm students be required to wear masks the entire time that they're in the dorm? After looking into other schools for the deaf and what they're doing, they are requiring masks full-time in the dorm. And so we are in agreement with that. If they're in a common area and they're around other students, if they're in the bedroom by themselves and they can take off their mask. But the rest of the time, they'll be required to wear it. There will not be any elementary sports. As far as football, volleyball and cheerleading this fall, middle school or high school, all of those have been canceled. Instead of those, our activity director has come up with some really great ideas for intramurals for the students that they're able to do at a distance like badminton and tennis. And so our students will be learning some new skills doing, in those sports. And so those would be non-contact or low-contact sports and activities to keep the students busy in the evening. The reason being that we canceled football and volleyball is that we are in a regional conference, which is the Great Plains Schools for the Deaf Conference where there's eight schools that participate together. Due to the travel restrictions for the state schools for the deaf, we won't be competing against those schools and we won't be traveling to each other's schools. The students will definitely be disappointed about that, but we'll be, hopefully we'll have something to replace that with that they'll be content with. We are currently working with the school districts on transportation on an individual basis. It seems as though most of the districts will continue, will be able to continue providing transportation without an issue. But we need to work with them on letting them know who will be coming to campus and which students will be staying home and learning remotely. And so our last area to talk about is outreach. And this is in the plan as well. We talk in the, talk in the plan about early intervention services, whether or not that's in-person, home visits, or if it would be remote. And we're leaving that up to the parents and the person providing the services to consider the environment, what's best for the child and everybody involved. And that's very clearly delineated in the plan. We will continue to provide the statewide services as we have been through outreach. We have continued to provide services since March. And something that's interesting, we actually have had actually more students enrolling because they're trying to learn remotely with an interpreter and they've experienced challenges with that. And so this fall, our enrollment has actually gone up. We're getting younger students for various reasons. We have the small class sizes, more of that one-on-one instruction, more individualized attention. And so we do not know at this point how many of those students would be transferring back to their district or if they'll continue in-person or remotely with us. And so we'll be monitoring those number of students to see who's coming in the fall. So that's a summary of what is in the reopening plan for the Kansas School for the Deaf. And we're ready as we can be. We're fully prepared to start on September 9th with our students. Thank you. I can take any questions that you might have at this point.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for the presentation. That was, board members, if you remember, the plans were in our Friday notes this last week. Randy sent those out, so we've had an opportunity to review those. So we may have a few questions. Ben Jones?
Yeah, and you may not be able to answer it yet. First of all, thank you, Lorraine, for the work and the staff. It's a challenge for everybody to do it and to put it together. How are you handling the CTE courses that I know that you partner with Olathe Schools to do, to do some classes with students? And is that going to continue or are they going to do them online from KSD? Or how are we going to handle that?
We have been in contact with the Olathe School District through the Olathe Advanced Technical Center, which is their CTE program, and finding out if they are offering those classes remotely or in-person. And it does seem as though those classes will be onsite. The next question then for the district is that we have parents whose, or students whose parents have selected remote instruction, will they be able to offer CTE classes remotely or instruction? And we haven't received a response back from them. I believe that they're still probably trying to determine how to handle that for themselves also as a district. And we definitely don't want students to lose those opportunities for CTE training because that speaks to their future. So again, we're still waiting for a response back from them. Hopefully, they'll be able to offer both. If a student were to come in person, then that's not an issue. We would continue to provide transportation to the district, which is at Olathe North. But we're just not sure about that remote learning option at this time.
I appreciate the answer and I wish you the best of luck navigating it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, Michelle Dombrowski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a comment and a question. I want to thank Randy for his constant communication with me on this every time he met with Luann or after a couple of those big meetings, he was able to call me or email me about the updates on that. And I want to thank her for her, you know, revisiting the in-person learning and changing the dates on that and diligently putting together plans as quickly as she did to make this work. I guess when we were talking about some of the things that were canceled as far as sports and learning new sports, my only question is, are they still going to be able to do the academic bowl? Because that's something that would be possibly you could social distance and wear masks, but students support that. And there is travel involved. So I just was curious if that was something that would be canceled as well. Thank you.
Oh, thank you for, Michelle, for asking that question. We will definitely continue with the activities that can be done either remotely or with social distancing, like the academic bowl. That's a national competition through Gallaudet University. And they oversee Battle of the Books, Academic Bowl, ASL Bowl and so forth. They've been doing that remotely. And we definitely don't want our students to miss out on that opportunity. The things that have been canceled are those sort of contact activities and sports that require, you know, being in close proximity with each other. Those are the things that are canceled. And we haven't arrived yet at a decision for the winter and spring sports. We're sort of taking that a season at a time or a month at a time to try to look ahead. We do not want our students to be deprived of enjoying their high school time and their activities. So we're really looking at every single scenario before we decide to cancel anything.
Thank you very much.
Okay, board members, the motion is it is moved that the Kansas State Board of Education accept the KSD Strong School Reopening Plan for the Kansas School for the Deaf in preparation for the 2021 school year. So do we have someone making that motion that would like to make that motion? Michelle, do you want to make that motion?
Sure. Do I need to repeat that again or do I just go from what you just said?
Just say, yes, I, that's, that's my motion.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to, to accept, accept those, those plans for the 2020-21 school.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay, so we've had a motion. Do we have a second? Deana Horst, any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Okay, I got this, this time it's a 10-0. I got that right. Good, thank you. Randy's got a few comments.
Challenges for the board chair and counting as everyone. I, again, as I said with John, I want to give a lot of kudos first to Michelle. I don't know how many times we talked, but a lot. And, and I talked to other board members and I know you, you said, boy, we'd really like to be in person for both the School for the Blind and Deaf. I was reminded of a, of a quote, actually an interview that many years ago, Peter Drucker, who many of you may know as kind of a post-World War II guru of management and leadership. Peter Drucker started his advising with General Motors. And he tells a story with Bill Moyers on the CBS This Morning years ago. Said, "I'll never forget when Roosevelt, President Roosevelt makes a call to GM and says, 'By the way, I'm announcing in an hour that you will build 30,000 fighter planes at the end of year.'" And he said, "All of us at GM went into a panic." We had just reached the conclusion internally that we could build at most 4,000 fighter planes. And we said to each other, "He's lost it. He's senile." For President Roosevelt, there's no way we can do this. A year and a half later, we built 50,000. All we needed was a big goal, an ambitious goal, and we went after it. I think the state board, and specifically Michelle, said, you know, think really bold. Luann reached back out to both parents and the staff and they delivered in a very short period of time to be ready, will be ready when they open. And so Luann, I just want to thank you. I know this is, this was not what originally you had on tap, but it, I think speaks, both John and Luann speak to what local boards and what superintendents and staff are going through and trying to prepare for this year. And so I just want to say, Luann, thanks. And please tell your staff thank you for all your hard work.
I will do that.
Okay, well, thanks.
Thank you to you, Randy, for your support and Michelle also. It's been, it's been really wonderful. I feel like we can move forward with confidence.
Well, thanks to both the leadership and the staff at both the School for the Blind and the School for the Deaf. And it looks like to us, you guys have a good plan to move forward with. We appreciate that. We know just this whole year, we don't really know for sure what's going to happen. But getting students onsite for onsite learning certainly is our priority everywhere. We're going to have to make some adjustments as we go, but you both have some good plans that we can move forward with. So thanks, thanks so much for doing those. And both those plans have been accepted. So we're good with that and comfortable to move forward. Our next agenda item is to discuss high school graduation requirements, individual plans of study and post-secondary credentialing. And Randy is- Okay, five-minute stretch break and Randy will be at the podium. So we'll start back up here in just a few minutes. I don't know what our Zoom situation is. We're on Zoom?
I've just, I'm sharing my screen on Zoom.
Okay, here it comes. Okay, very good. Okay, now Randy's here. And like I mentioned, we're going to discuss high school graduation requirements, individuals' plans of study and the post-secondary credentialing.
So I'm just going to frame a few things for you because I think we had this discussion a lot. There's a lot of people having this discussion. I just want to kind of frame it and then as best as we can, even, even on our Zoom, have a discussion. And then I know some of you have to be on the road so you can travel a long ways so you can engage in another Zoom. So we all appreciate that and, and the time that you're putting in, so. Just go right. So let's talk about high school graduation and what we, what I'm calling the transition to young adulthood. So as you know, this is our latest five-year look. We are making progress on graduation. In fact, that five-year average is 86 and we're currently setting just short of 88. We're also making slow progress on that pink five-year success average, which are the percent of graduates that go on to post-secondary. But it's not fast enough. And I'm going to bet just, you know, if we were going to go to Vegas tonight and place our bets, this fall is going to not be a banner year for post-secondary enrollment anywhere in the United States. So we're, you know, when we take that class, when we take a look in, in 2020 or the fall of 2020-21, we won't be looking at that until 23. But, but when we, when we see that, I think we're going to really see a drop and we'll have to remind people why that was. It would have been the pandemic of 20 and 21. So what we have to do is throughout the system is to try to ensure that more kids go on to earn something beyond a high school education. I want you to, to think back to possibly your grandparents, maybe great-grandparents, certainly your grandparents. And think about your own kids and your own grandkids right now. What happens at the end of eighth grade in the spring barring a pandemic? Right now, they go to high school and they have a celebration almost in every Kansas community called eighth-grade recognition, eighth-grade graduation, eighth-grade promotion, but they don't stop. But 100 years ago, they did. Because that was all that was necessary was a basic education. The only people that went on to high school were those that were going on to college and it was a very small percent. World War II and coming off of World War II changed all of that. We have to engage our communities. We have to not change it again. The vast majority of kids, 75% or so, are going to need to go on beyond high school to either a bachelor, master's, PhD, professional level, or multiple certificates or associate degree to have the same earning power. So that's, this is what this is about, graduating high school, having the skill set to go on and further their education. So over the last year, so I've been thinking about these stages of development. You heard a lot about birth to age four today, right? We're engaged in all of these stages. Steve talks a lot about that, being ready at certain grade bands. These are just the way I put it together. Birth to age four is kind of getting ready for school. That five to nine is that early, you know, development through about what would be third grade. And then you have kind of the upper elementary through what I call the end of the sophomore year. But that oversight and influence at age of 17 to 20, think of the junior, senior year of high school and the first two years out of high school. So it's this transit, what I call this transition to young adulthood. And I think those ages should look very different than the ages 10 to 16. You're transitioning, you're transitioning. And so, and so what happens still in Kansas high schools, that senior year in particular, people are counting credits. We've got to get them to stop counting credits and go to an individual plan of study. Because if you count credits, the kid that's been successful for the first three years comes back for their senior year and says, hmm, well, you need, you have, pick a number, 24 credits to graduate and I have 23. I just need to take English and government and I'd like to play a little football and play in the band. And so we put together some kind of schedule and we take a bunch of electives and the kid will say, I don't know what I'm going to take. That's the wrong way in which we're thinking about it because we're thinking the high school's the end. High school's preparation for the next stage. So this goes together. We do want to graduate high school, but we want to be prepared. And we don't have direct oversight of those two years after high school. You don't. We have influence. Now, Kansas Board of Regents has oversight of that, but we're going to talk about that. Because if we're going to, if we're going to say, and you know, I've, when I was superintendent, I gave this speech a lot because in McPherson County, there's this remarkable thing called All Schools Day where I called it a lazy superintendent in the early 1900s said, hey, instead of me getting on a horse and going to all these one-room schoolhouses and bestowing eighth-grade graduation, how about we brought them all to Main Street in McPherson? And at the end of a parade, we, we gave them the diplomas. That's literally how it started. They still celebrate it today. It's a wonderful celebration of kids. We now have got to move a system that ends at high school two years later. And we've got two different systems that we're going to have to talk about over the next several years, right? You didn't move eighth-grade graduation in one year. It happened over time. But we've got to start moving our public that those four years are much different going forward. So I like to say, what does the research tell us about this age group? What data do I need to be measuring to execute well in that age group? What partnerships do I need to be successful? And when I say I, a school district, what programs maybe do we implement? And how should I structure the time and the content and ages to ensure success? So Brad's heard me say this and poor Quinn, his son's going to be tired of me using him as an example. But soon, next week, Pitt State, two days. He's going to be a Pitt State major in construction management. Construction management is a great, he'll have a job. When he graduates, he will already have a job. That's the placement in that field. Okay? If we, if we look back last year, it would be ideal in his individual plan of study to spend half a day taking dual-credit courses that would be counted for gen ed credits at Pitt State. And the other half a day, working in some field in construction management, learning what, what that is. And they actually spent the summer working concrete, which is great, exactly, exactly what he should, right? If I was going to be a teacher, which I was, half a day should be, in my opinion, spent on the prereqs that I needed at Kansas State. And the other half, I should have been in a classroom. Multiple classrooms, learning what it is to teach. Because that's the skill set of moving from an academic setting to a young adulthood. So if a student doesn't know, which is always true, they're going to be still experiencing that going forward. So these are just some of the things to ask. Look at the research from ACT. You know them. There are tests. Current gauges of college and career readiness tend to focus on academic preparation and achievement. But a mounting body of evidence shows that success in college and the workplace is multi-dimensional. High academics leading to dual credit, high workforce development leading to workforce. So, so the ideal would be if Quinn was doing construction management or I was doing teaching, when I got to K-State or Quinn gets to Pittsburgh State, right? That workplace readiness is credit also. Right? Because we've got to merge that. Kids will jump off at various places in that continuum, like a CNA, a CMA, a lab tech, they'll jump off. They may only finish a year or two or they may go on for a bachelor. Academics, and this is quote from ACT Research, can't prepare students for college and certainly for the world of work. This is from the Hoffman Foundation on what Kansas City needs for graduates, right? They've been having lots of conferences. They've got Missouri and Kansas schools engaged in this. But look, work. We want students to work or simulate work. If you ask, if you go to Cerner or you go to Cargill or you go to Black and Beach, you go to Hallmark, you go to any large Kansas company, you know what the- what the number-one skill set they want for college graduates or high school graduates? Project management. They want you to know how to bring people together, manage a project, then that team's going to disassemble, and a new team's going to be put together, over and over and over. Work. Yes, you've got to have education, and then life lessons. Look at it. Fail and recover. Give civic engagement. You see some things there that maybe you've been talking about? This is the Kaufman research. So what I'm saying is, there's not disagreement on this. There's really not disagreement. What we don't have is a system to deliver it. And I mean, our system or even higher ed, because we're trying to talk about merger of a new system. These skill sets and our redesign, student success skills, all of those things we've talked about, a personalized path. Ann tells me all the time, Randy, I don't think these IPSs are as good as they should be. I think even last night, you said that, right? They're not. But they can be. We've got to be more robust, personalize the plan. We've got to engage the families, the businesses, community partnerships, different. And you see the real-world application. Kids have got to learn to apply this knowledge, and they have to do it over and over and over again. So who's currently working, then, on this plan? Well, you are. So is Kansas Board of Regents. We're going to meet with them jointly in September. The Coordinating Council, which is made up of you, the Board of Regents, and the Kansas Chamber of Commerce. In fact, they meet today, 3:00. The Governors' Council has a lot of task force, many of you are on that, that are working in some capacity on this same issue. And the Kaufman Foundation, spending lots of grant money, especially in the greater Kansas City area, working on this issue. Oh, you created a special work group. Ann and Jim, and Jim were on that, on high school graduation, changing requirements, and doing this work. My opinion, that's too many cooks in the kitchen, because we're duplicating efforts. We're going to have to figure out how to streamline these efforts. We all are well-intended, and they're all doing very similar work, but they're doing parallel work, not always collaborating with each other, because everyone understands the urgency to go do this work. Everyone knows the problem. Really, we really know the solution. We just don't have an execution plan yet. So with that, Brad and I just want to open it up for discussion, about what you're thinking around these items, what your frustrations are, and how do we move eighth-grade graduation to everyone going to high school? How do we move high school graduation to everyone graduating high school with something else? Which could be, again, can you imagine a day where at age 20, every kid would have a high school graduation, multiple certificates, associate degree, and then could make the decision, go right into business, or post, go to business for a while, or go on, or go on to school? And if they went on to school, they could end up with a master's degree. Education is going to be important, and our market, as you know from the Georgetown Institute, demands those type of skills. So a lot of you have been engaged in this conversation. And by the way, at 3:00 this afternoon, I've seen, you've seen the agenda, Kathy and Gene, this is specifics on how we pull this off and how we bring it together. So Brad and I'll answer questions.
Randy, why don't you pull the Zoom people up full, so when they have questions, I can see their hands. There we go. Okay, and Steve Roberts does have a question. Steve, go ahead, please.
Oh, I don't know if I have a question exactly. I have an agenda. I ran for this board thinking that I had a contribution to make, because there are fundamental flaws in the system. And before you were here, when you were doing great work in McPherson, and Diane Debacker was our commissioner, I had a tendency to say, well, you know, the system is flawed. I said that over and over again. I didn't get much traction, really, because you keep saying that, and people just say, well, okay, so do you have any solutions? And so I waited till my second term, and I wrote my solutions down, and you keep a laminated copy on your desk. One of my colleagues, one of the six women on this board, I don't know if she wants to take credit for it, said, why don't you go ahead and apply for that license and just see what happens? And if they reject it, you go to the Professional Standards Board, and if they reject it, then you bring it to the board. So that's my plan. One of the things that we have to overcome is the bias, Dr. Watson, that only educators can do this work. And we've hinted at this, that, well, who do you want teaching that welding class? We want a welder, you know? And can't we welcome attorneys and judges to come into our high schools and teach civics and government? Wouldn't that be a good thing to do? But there's this longstanding bias for professional development, which is in itself not a bad thing. But I got to tell you, professional development ain't all it's cracked up to be. And if we don't open this up to the public, we're going to lose public education. So the system is fundamentally flawed. And the bias is, no, it isn't. We would never do anything to hurt a child. We're all about education. We're all about making the world a better place. And we are. But there's a bias that absolutely rejects people who have all sorts of talents to contribute to our young people. And until we change that bias, I don't think we're going to move the needle. And that's my contribution for today, sir.
I think I would disagree that the system is flawed. I think the system was built for a different era. And the era has shifted, and we have to respond. And the system's always slow to respond. I tell the story, on Fridays, my wife will already have an order of groceries placed at Walmart. She'll never walk into Walmart. She'll come back from Newton, drive into McPherson, and they will put it in her car. That didn't happen a year ago. Why did they shift? Because, two things, the economy was shifting first, and then COVID really shifted it. But it was slow to respond. I mean, it didn't respond before there was a need. So there wasn't a need until we got into a gig economy, and the economy shifted, and now there's a need. So I don't think it's flawed. I think it's not responsive to what the needs are today, and we will have to recreate it. And I think that's what all of you are trying to do as we do this, is recreate it.
Somebody up there has something on the chat. So does somebody have a question or a comment? Or is that the previous one?
That was previous.
Okay, all right. Okay, other comments to Randy?
Or Brad.
Gene. Or Brad. Gene Clifford.
I just had a question. I've heard that students sort of make up their minds whether they're capable of going on to post-secondary work in about fifth grade. And so I'm wondering if maybe we need to kind of bring down the idea of how, what they're learning ties into careers and to jobs to a much lower level, so that maybe they would see that and feel themselves capable of doing that.
Thank you, Gina. I talk about this a lot. This is, the problem with learning is, you can't learn anything new unless you can attach that to schema that you understand. So if you're trying to learn a new language as an adult, it's really hard, because you've engaged for many, many years in one language. Younger you are, you have to attach it. But if I come, whatever environment I see, right, Gene, that's all I know. And so I can't imagine anything else at nine years of age, other than what I see. And so field trips and exposure is so vital in those early ages, so I can, oh, I could do that. I could do this. Reading books, where imagination plays a big role, also does that, right? Oh, I read this book, and I really want to be whatever it is. So you're right. I always say, if you ever watch the first day of school for a kindergartner, they're running in, they're so excited, the backpack's flopping, it's bigger than they are, mom and dad usually crying, because, you know, this is my baby going to school. They're excited. Somewhere around 10 years old, that really dissipates, because they're already starting to figure, I can't do this, or I can't do that. And that's why when we look at academic scores, or social-emotional growth, or those indicators, by the time, when I hit my junior year, I have to have all of those options available to me, Gene. If I don't, then I really can't execute a plan. I can only execute one or two plans. If I'm not eligible to go in the Air Force, I can't execute that plan. If I'm not eligible to go to KU and major and be a doctor, if I can't go be a welder, because I don't have the, I can't execute that plan. And that starts really early. So it's not just fundamental skills, it's this combination. Brad, do you want to say anything?
Well, the one thing that I just finished experiencing over the last couple of years is watching my kids enter that senior year. One went on, the other one's getting ready to go on. But there's so many of their classmates don't have the opportunity to be exposed to, or have the conversations that they could see themselves in, or even imagine. And the only reason a handful of them are choosing to go on is because they just feel that's expected of them, because my aunt or aunt, or they see it through someone else's eyes. And they're going, and when you ask them what they're going to major in, and half of them say undecided. So they really haven't been exposed to, and I think that is the key to the individual plan of study, is early and often expose them to, have the conversations with the, and you can't lay it all on the parents, because the parents have never been exposed to having those types of conversations. It's just got to be a part of the process that we're trying to build.
Hey, we do have a number of questions or comments now, so I'll start through the list, unless, Randy, you have something else to add?
Well, I was just going to say the same thing. When my son said, I want to be an animator, and his art teacher said, Randy, he's really talented, I was like, wow, where do we find it? I have no art skill, and I have no idea how to be an animator. So, right as Brad said, I couldn't help him. I got to go and search up. And let me tell you, you Google that, you'll find a lot of take-your-money places, right? I mean, there's, I would say, it's hard. This is a hard thing to do. And that's why I think this IPS is the gateway. It's the key, and you got to execute it right. So, all right, lots of questions or comments.
Yep, Ann Mah.
Thank you. So, two questions. I'll give you both of them. One is, what do we do about all these cooks in our kitchen? Even though I know they all mean well, and we're all after the same thing, now what do we do about it? And the other thing is, why are we having such a hard time? I mean, this is what redesign's all about. So maybe, are the redesigned schools getting it better? Are kids spending their senior year better in redesigned schools? Is that the answer? Push forward with that? Or why can't we convince all the high schools to be doing better their senior year?
So I'll answer the first. I'm going to let Brad tackle the other. I think, personally, the Coordinating Council ought to be the one to take this.
And that is?
That's K-BOR, and Kansas Chamber, and you got two off of each. And so you got a smaller group, and they can bring back to those three entities, which is business, higher ed, and this board, action items, quickly. That's just my thought, and I think you ought to have that discussion. Because it's nimble, it has the right representation, and the bodies that it represents can make something happen. Now, you want to talk about redesign, and are we making progress?
Yeah, so Jay Scott would probably be the best one to answer this, because he works with the secondary redesigns. But all redesign schools, elementary, middle school, and high school, their ultimate goal is the board outcomes. That, you know, the successful high school graduate, and then they have goals focused on, socio-emotional, individual plans of study. So when you get, when you start looking at the high schools that are going through redesign, they are very much looking at recreating that experience while in high school. And again, like Randy said, it starts in middle school, but then it also starts in elementary with field trips, then gets into career exploration. So the high schools are very much really looking at, how do we then get them to that next stage of real-world application? And it's the individual plan of study that's built into. So hopefully we will have some good models, because, you know, we're in our third year of it. So hopefully some of those earlier ones are. But yes, trying to recreate that experience for those kids while they're in high school, to get them those, that, the one redesigned principle on real-world application, that looks different at each level. But at the high school, you really start getting into that career exploration, the internships, the job shadowing, kind of like Randy described.
Because I know we've got, some schools do way better at this. I mean, you just look up what's going on up in Seaman. Of course, they have one person dedicated to internships, and they've got, you know, a couple hundred kids out doing stuff, and others aren't doing anything.
Ben Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chair. How does this impact, I know we're working with the Board of Regents, and they oversee the tech schools, but are tech schools involved in this conversation? Or is it just, you know, from the four-year vantage point?
No, no, it's, 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 any education past high school that leads you to some certificate is valuable.
And then, I know we're looking at the Coordinating Council and who's on it. Does that involve private institutions? Are they involved in this conversation at all? Because a lot of our kids, I know, a lot of my communities have those private institutions, and you were at McPherson, you had two of them, to deal with. A lot of those kids attend those institutions. Are they involved in this conversation? Or are they just piggybacking off of the Board of Regents?
Matt Lindsey's always, I mean, he's not on the Coordinating Council, but he's always a part of the conversations we have.
Okay. And then, transitioning to that, certifications, and we have the CTE pathways, especially at the secondary level, and that's kind of what we're looking at right now. Is there a way that when we've put these together, that we can get these, some of these basic certifications accomplished through these pathways in high school? And I know some schools have done it. They've had to really get creative on how to do it, because of how our pathways are constructed, and that goes into my several, the requests for future gen ad, just to talk about CTE, about when we formulate our CTE pathways, do we have the end goal of mind? Do we just say, hey, we have these courses, let's put them together, make a pathway out of it? Or, hey, we can get the certification through this course, this course, and this course, and that creates a pathway? And that leads on to other conversations from there.
So that's a very broad topic. But let's talk about, in 1920, around the 1920s, you were going to go to the university you went to high school. If not, like my grandmother, you stopped at eighth grade. But by the time we got to the late 20s, 30s, there was this thought, well, maybe you went to high school, and maybe you studied vocational training. There were two. In essence, there were two, and then soon added to be three. You can guess, in Kansas, what were the two?
Ag.
Ag.
Homemaker.
And homemaker. Soon added by woodworking, okay? In Kansas today, what are the two most prominent CTE programming?
Culinary.
Facts.
Facts.
And ag.
Ag.
So when our job market, ag is certainly there. Facts is a great life skill. But you heard Amanda and Melissa talk about, many families have two people working, so they're jointly taking care of the home, and balancing a budget, and those life skills. But it's not generally what the homemaker, right, which was the primary role. When you look, we need coding, business, ag, linemen, alternate energy, and teaching. Those are the pathways that lead to the high job. So Ben, we've got a whole, again, when you're talking about a system, we build a system for another era. And now we have to dismantle that. Let's talk about, let's talk about dual-credit, where high school teachers, by 23, I think we got extended, can't teach dual-credit. Why? They have been, because higher ed doesn't want that, right? You've got, you've got, right now, at a community college, let's use Montgomery County, you've got Coffield Independence, you've got people at that college teaching English Comp 1. You've got people at the high school in Independence and at Coffield County High School, teaching English Comp 1. Why are we duplicating that effort? We've got three funding We've got three funding sources. We've got K-12 funding, we've got Senate Bill 155 funding, and we've got higher ed tuition reimbursement, and then what the parents are paying. We've got to create a whole new system. So all of these conversations will start to lead us to this, what I call this transition to young adulthood, where we're taking a look at, we've got a teacher shortage. So we've got, we're going to have to find creative ways of merging that freshman sophomore year, whatever that looks like, Ben, and that junior senior year. So kids may end up with multiple welding certificates. But one of the things I I ask every kid that tells me they want to be a welder, I did this in Fredonia when I was down there recently. I said, listen, would you think about getting an associate degree? Why would I do that? I want to weld, I'm really good at it, you make a lot of money. I said, because at 40, will you like doing that hard work? I look at my own son-in-law, who makes really good money out of the oil refinery in McPherson, really good money. And he's 33, and his knees are already getting shot, because he love, by the way, he's chosen that job as a certificate. He loves to climb the coker, he loves to be outside. But he says to me recently, Randy, I, I can see I don't want to do this much, I, I can't do this much longer. I would love to do it, but I can't. With a little bit more education, which he's already doing, he will run the controller, which he doesn't want to do, but he has to see it. Ask a welder, at 40, I'd like for you to have at least an associate, associate degree in business, so you can run the welding shop. And you can have people working for you. And most of the kids will say, Ben, that makes sense, right? You're helping them make their plan. So it's a long answer, but we have to take a look at all of the systems, and then start to re-put those systems together. And we've got to do it with the idea of transitioning to young adulthood.
Deanna Horst.
Thank you. Well, as I listened to Randy talk, it dawned on me, I was, I'm probably sitting here as an example. Because my father did not have a high school education. And he's probably the reason I have a doctorate degree. Because education, he was in the, in World War II. When he came back, he realized how important education was. And every one of his kids has a, not only a high school education, but at least some college education. And four of us actually have at least a bachelor's degree. So some of this is also convincing parents that this is important. Another component, I think, is also our funding, as you kind of alluded to. Because when I look back to when my dad was in high school, he had to leave his home to go to high school in a town that had a high school. Where today, we have a bus that picks us up. He had to stay in a relative's home. So that was, that changed as well. And we started funding things that we never funded before. So if we want people to go to higher ed, because funding is an issue. You may want to be a welder and have a degree, an associate's degree. But if you can't afford to do it, you won't be able to. So somewhere in that arena, we need to convince legislators how important it's going to be for us to extend the funding at least two years out from high school, it seems to me. And I agree that the individual plan of study is the most important component in how we structure our high schools. So it gives students the opportunity to experience those different careers that they might be interested in. They find out if they're really interested. And I think that, that's part of the key also. So there's no wasting of time, just sort of spinning your wheels, trying things out in college. So thank you for letting me say my piece.
Well, we already know enough to do it. It's now, we have to execute a transition from a 100-year-old system to a new set, and that's not ever easy. But we know what to do, right? You're articulating, and I will get, I'm telling you, if we go get business, the chamber representing, they're going to say the same things. Higher Ed says the same things. What we're going to have to look at is, how do, how do we, how do we mesh those systems together? Just like we meshed eighth grade to ninth grade, and it became a transition. That is really hard work, the execution of this.
Janet Wall.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm probably going to repeat some of this that's already been said. I, my concern are the graduation requirements and the independent, and and the individual plan of study. First of all, we need to remove seat time. Now, I know we've halfway done that, but not completely. And I guess I go back to my grandson, who's not Pittsburgh State, by the way. He, he's loved, from the time he was little, we knew what he was going to do. The kid loved electrical from the time he was a toddler. And when he got, when he got to high school, he struggled. I mean, and I asked him once, I said, what if they would have given you, instead of reading Romeo and Juliet, you could have had a code manual for electricity? And he said, oh, I would have loved it. And he struck, he barely made it. I mean, he got through, but he barely made it with those type of requirements. Now he's going to, he went to KCK, got a certificate in electrical, thrived. He's not Pittsburgh, and he's in the electrical, I mean, construction management. And in his, in his classes on construction, he thrives. On those other classes, he, he struggles, okay? Then my granddaughter, who I've got, his younger sister, she's a senior this year. She's done pretty good, not excellent, but you know, she's a probably the average or above average student. But she has no clue what she wants to do. You know, we've missed her. I've talked to her myself several times about what she wants to, she has no idea. Fortunately, she goes, go to the community college and take these courses, and maybe she can find a direction. But that's where I'm at with my own family, so I cannot be alone with this, with talking with them. So somehow, we need to get rid of some of these things that we're doing.
Every one of you have the same story. It's a slightly different verse, a slightly different lyrics, but it's the same story. And and you're exactly right. Once you help a child find their passion, I'm not talking about the specific job. You know, many of you can talk about, Anne, you, you know, you've worked different jobs. Jean, you've had lots of different, right? But you rarely change, Steve, you and I have had this conversation. I'm in a profession, I I did a little work in healthcare when I was young, because I want to help people. You have an aptitude for kind of the, the physics and the math side of that. Engineers rarely go off and and enjoy, you know, and become teachers, social workers, minister, because they, they just see it different, right? So he's, he's had an aptitude for fixing things electrical. He's not going to like Romeo and Juliet. Doesn't mean he shouldn't learn a little bit of it, right? But we should take the opportunity to really deepen that, which is different than your granddaughter. That has, oh, I don't know what I want to do. And that plays out in every family, in every family. So again, we know the problem. We actually probably know some of the solutions. It's that we have to dismantle two or three systems, and we have to combine them into one again. And that's, that's the challenge.
So Randy, were you kind of suggesting that all these groups that we've got doing things, we maybe charge the Coordinating Council with coordinating? Because they're already working with, we've got the K-12, we've got the post-secondary group, that they kind of be the, what their name says, the coordinating group that kind of takes a look at these pieces and can bring information back to all the various groups? And then I'm sure we're going to have to have people working on things within the groups. It's not like the Coordinating Council, they didn't get, they're not going to do all the work. I mean, they're going to have to assign, because we will have to work through legislature, we will have to do a variety of things to do things differently, because, you know, just like Janet talked about her grandson, you know, he needed a little bit of kind of reading instruction than maybe other folks. So kind of taking a look at some of those things. Is that what you're kind of suggesting?
Yes, and that doesn't mean that the Governor's Council doesn't have its place. And Governor's Council is going to continue to do great stuff. But I think for, for us, that Coordinating Council has the right people. It can, it can bring things back for this board and other boards. You're going to already meet with the Board of Regents. We can get Matt in front, you know, and maybe even the tech, you know, the Tech Ed Authority. We can, all those need to merge, because the, I, I just want to say this, Madam Chair. You know what really makes this work hard? Is the old Pogo cartoon, all right? And I, I'm going to say this out of love, because no one loves public education more than I do, or I wouldn't be standing here. Pogo, we have met the enemy, and he is us. We're dismantling ourselves, which is never easy, but the pandemic will help us a little bit. All right, because this is, will be painful, because what do you hear from people right now? Can we just get back to normal? Can we just have a sense of normal? Can we get back to what we know? That's what everyone wants, all of us, me included, right? At the same time, we've got to aspire to be a little different, and we're going to have to challenge ourselves. Sherry knows this, right? We have to cha, and say, I love you, but we have to do this different, and how can we help each other transition that? And that's what's really difficult, because you've built a technical community system. You built a private college system. You built a technical, excuse me, a community college system. You built a four-year system. You built a K-12 system. You've built, I say, you, we have built these systems over time to run then that organization. And when you have to dismantle that, Sears didn't want to go bankrupt. They couldn't make the change from a, from a catalog company to a, to a mall. They couldn't make that next change for them. That's what we have to do. And by the way, as I said, I said, you know, public school, private schools will have the same hardship. The Catholic and Lutheran, which are really, you know, great accredited private schools and others, will have this, because they've also built the same system. So Deanna, when we say it's, kids don't have enough money maybe to go do, true. And we're not going to have enough money to fund all this if we think about funding all the systems like we do. That's why it's so hard that we're going to, we need to come up with the solutions. Because we know, we know how it ought to be, and that's why this work, redesign, is so hard. But I think when you meet with the Board of Regents next, next month, you're going to see the same sense of urgency from them. I, I just think you will, you're going to see from the Tech Ed Authority, the same sense of urgency. And I think we can, we can do it. It's just not going to happen tomorrow, but we can start taking steps to move that forward.
I have a couple more questions or comments. Steve Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think to facilitate this collegiality, or this cogency, coming together, whatever the right metaphor is, there are things that are time-honored traditions that we can rely on. You have to practice your arithmetic. It's a good idea to practice your spelling words. It's a good idea to learn your shapes and colors very early and learn how to share. These things that we have done for decade upon decade, centuries, really, it still works. And I think if we can find the right emphasis, easier said than done, to allow this sense of redesign, oh, we have to do things differently, but it's not all different. There are things that that parents know, teachers know, the field, the culture. Humanity knows it's a good idea to practice arithmetic. It's a good idea to to hold a pencil and and take notes. It's a good idea to practice your spelling words. If if we can build bridges between the past and the future, but by not, by not trying to blow things up, we could do this. And in Kansas, as you've said many times, Randy, we're small enough, we're, the power structure, everybody knows everybody. If there's one state in the Union that can pull this off, it's us. We could have a system that in the year 2040, people want to live in Kansas because the education system is as good as anywhere on the planet. Thank you very much.
Anne Mah.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I'm trying to focus on what we're talking about here, because the topic was graduation requirements, right? And that's what Jim and Jim and I were working on. And so I want to be clear about what we're asking the Coordinating Council to do, because we don't need anybody to redesign redesign. We think redesign is the answer, and we want everybody to get on board with that. And if the State Chamber, if we can explain it to them, and they can get more involved in bringing people in to help kids focus on what they want to do after high school, that's great. But, I mean, we don't need somebody to do another big picture. Look, we already did that. We, we wanted somebody to talk about, because K-BOR did what they did, do we need to do anything about graduation requirements? Wasn't that the question?
Well, that's one of the questions, but see, that was that specific task force question. But the Governor's Council's kind of saying workforce, education, melding it together. The Coordinating Council, but they're all, we're all talking about graduation from high school and transition to young adulthood in different aspects.
Right.
So I'm, I'm saying, we're going to have to, I think, instead of having conversations that bleed over into other areas that other people aren't having, we need to have them in one area and then bring those back to you as quickly as possible.
So I, like, what is it we're asking the Coordinating Council to do? Because I thought we were trying to get some ideas on, do we need to change our graduation requirements?
You know, when I kind of think of that, I think, okay, the K-BOR did something different with qualified admissions. Now, what we're doing is reacting. Instead of reacting, I'd like to see us all get together and come up with a comprehensive plan. Instead of, okay, we're going to react, then we're going to react, then we're going to react. You know, why don't we all work together, because we all want the ultimate same goal, which is a good education system for our kids? And just like, you know, 100 years ago, eighth grade education was normal. Now, high school education's normal, but we got to have more. So it's like, how do we transition to the next piece? And instead of reacting, let's get a group together who can bring what at some time are disparate pieces together, and put them together to make them work. So that's kind of what that Coordinating Council can, I think the idea is to do the coordination.
Jim and Jim and I were working on too, along with K-BOR.
Well, and the Coordinating Council would kind of bring that all together. And maybe we'd, then work would go back out to other groups that were, are pieces that need to, but let's all work together instead of separate pieces. You know, I look at these, these kids in high school, and, you know, your son's a great example, you know, could have, could have had a whole bunch of, you know, dual credit classes and gotten most of his freshman year of college out of the way. You know, isn't that what we want for most of our kids? That kind of a thing, that they can get those credits in a way that makes sense for them.
And and you have a, a built-in expert on the board. Michelle Dombrowski is living this right now. She's got kids in school, and she's, she's going to be living it over the next several years, just like Jenny, you talked about your grandkids. And she's going to talk about the same experiences, a different verse of the same experiences. And then, and then, and then her transition for her kids after high school too. So we've got these, we've got these great experiences that we can build upon.
I guess we need to kind of decide the will of the board. I don't know that we need necessarily take a vote, but are we, do you want to? I mean, the coordinating council is an established group that has the members of these primary agencies. And, you know, the community colleges and the technical colleges do work with K-Bor, correct? So they are kind of involved in that. Our folks from the private schools, you know, we kind of, we have a lot of K-12 folks that are accredited by us, but not all. And then we have our private colleges and colleges. So they'll have, need to kind of come along too. But I mean, is that kind of the will of the board?
But what are we asking them to work on?
Pardon me? We're asking them to work on this overall. I mean, you know, there's not a name for it.
The big picture.
It's a big picture piece. How do we, Randy, what do you call it, transitioning to young adulthood? You know, how do we work on that big piece?
Junior, senior year of high school and the first two years out of high school is we look at it now. And how do we create something different within that space as you transition to young adulthood? I just think the junior, senior year looks different than the freshman, sophomore year. But we don't make it make, because we've got a four-year high school. That was, that's a design that's a hundred years old, right? And so you've been talking about what are the requirements to make that transition? I think you've got to look at those requirements in those last two years and those first.
Could we look at asking the, I'm sorry?
Go ahead, Janet.
I'm sorry. Could we look at having the coordinating council look at this and then determine what type of subcommittees they need to, I mean, that would be my thought of how to handle this. But I mean, at least that's a first step, maybe.
I mean, I have no doubt there's going to need to be subcommittees. It's going to need to be, you know, but as Randy mentioned, we've got a lot of different groups working on different things and we're kind of not coordinating it really. So this could be a way to coordinate it.
Randy, are you suggesting that we suggest to the governor that she defer to the coordinating council?
No, I think there are some people there on the workforce development and commerce and other places that certainly has its place. I'm not saying that. I'm saying, you know, we wanted everyone involved in redesign in just a few years. If we're going to get this work really moving in a positive place in a generation, we've got to be a little bit more nimble in doing the work. And so I'm speaking mostly probably for me and for Brad. I'm going to different meetings that are all talking in general around the same things. We can go to Kaufman, they're talking, we're talking about the same thing. Then I come back and I go to governor's count, we're talking about the same things. We don't have enough kids being, our workforce isn't ready. I mean, what, but it's all the same things. And some way, we've got to bring that together so we can move the needle. You can move the needle, K-Bor can move the needle, the Kansas Chamber can move the needle, the private colleges can move the needle. Those, that's who can move the needle. So we've got to have a system that gets feedback back to those agencies and then actions taken, in my opinion. And I think the coordinating council is the best vehicle right now. Though that may morph into something else. And I think work groups could spin off of that, for sure.
Dana Horst.
Thank you. Randy, have we looked at our requirements for graduation? And looked at what is really necessary? So we could free up some time at the end of, like, junior, senior year? To do more types of things that students may be more interested in?
I almost want Brad to answer it.
Career directed?
I don't think time is the problem. I think we're counting credits and not designing the future. We don't have enough workforce internships available, because we haven't set up that system. We've got, you mentioned busing, we've got a travel issue, right? We've got a tuition. I don't, I can't, I can't afford the materials fees to go be the auto mechanic. We've got all of these hurdles that then people just say, well, then, we can't do it. But I don't think it's a time. I think, you want to speak to it? You just lived through it with your son.
You know, when you look at the board's 21 credits for graduation requirements, most students have met 95% of that by the end of their junior year. Because it's a minimum. And they're going into their senior year really only needing maybe a senior government and a senior English, which we still might be important. The problem is the rest of the experience, because most school districts have 24 to 28 credits that are required. And it's just looking at what counts as a credit totally different and what kind of experience and make that junior, senior year much more meaningful as far as the student's post-secondary future, other than just making it meaningful to, one, get a high school diploma, and two, be in enough classes if you still want to play basketball. And I mean, it's just, you know, why can't I play basketball and still be out doing an intern? You know, just thinking that experience differently. Because what the Board of Regents, with their qualified admission changes, really didn't affect the decisions that most kids make. They're still going to take three credits of math, which shall include algebraic and geometric concepts. Doesn't say it has to be Algebra II. It doesn't have to, you know, so schools can have some flexibility. But it really didn't change the experience of the kid.
So, so Dina, let me just say this. This happened, this happened in the school year of 1920. In the school year of 1976, '77, I had the same thing. I wanted to play basketball. I had enough credits to graduate Field Kelly High School, because I went to summer school every summer, because I just liked to learn. Dr. Battatore said, you can't do that, you didn't declare it. So we'll have you take one class in the morning and one class in the afternoon, you'll be eligible. I took choir and French III. And then the next year, went off to K-State to be a teacher and was woefully underprepared. Now, I say that, that was 40 years ago, more than 40 years ago. And the same experience somewhat happened. Because we're thinking about a certain amount of credits. And that comes back to Anne. Are those aligned to what is necessary to be successful at the next level? Your grandson needs to have heavy electricity, mathematical skills related to that, science skills related to that. That's what he needs, all right? That's different than what I needed to be a history teacher. Or for my granddaughter that doesn't know, has to be an exploration. But then that's a labor-intensive system, right? Where you've got to allocate resources to make all that happen. And that's not what we are set up to do. And that's where it falls apart, if that makes sense, Dina.
Yeah, it does. And it seems to me then that part of the picture is also convincing school districts that they need to do something a little different or offer something different also and be willing to make changes. While I think some have moved a little bit, I don't think they've moved as far as we probably need to move them.
Anybody, okay, somebody online is on Zoom? I see a number on the chat, but I don't know who it is. Nobody's raising their hand.
Jim Porter made a comment. Madam Chair, it was Jim Porter, he had a chat comment.
Okay, Jim Porter?
I just said, it looks to me like working with a coordinating council is a good way to keep us from duplicating effort. I think that I support moving forward with them and trying to bring all this together.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. You know, when we think about this, it is, it seems monumental. But I think some, one of the things that it could do is give school districts permission to do things that they want to do. And they actually have a lot of authority already to do this. It's like they don't think they do. They have an awful lot of flexibility that they're not taking advantage of. Well, I mean, still like the old Carnegie units, you know? Carnegie units aren't required anymore. And they haven't been for a while. But a lot of folks think they are. So I think we need to look at this, figure out some structures and figure out some ways to do things.
And we all want to move to a competency-based system. We now have built those competencies and grade bands to make it easier for people to see that. But that's a huge funding shift. Because you will have a variety of kids that would leave high school as it's defined now, early. Because they would complete it early. The question is, should they be funded in whatever their plan is for the full 13 years? Probably make the argument, Janet, yes. But then that's not the way the statute was written in order to fund schools. This is why it's difficult to dismantle these things. Because you've got statutes and regulations that you have to dismantle. Now, it's not impossible, it's just difficult. That's why we've got to start doing some of that work in order to then, I mean, what gets in the way right now of whether, on the college level, whether you're going to play football? Your conference. If your conference is going to play, you're going to play. If your conference doesn't play, like, you heard what Nebraska won, maybe we have to go back to the Big 12, because the Big Ten's not playing, all right? Because that's how it was set up, right? The conferences, it's the same thing. So we can, someone asked me yesterday, can we move to a competency-based system? Yes, Madam Chair, you just said it. You can do that today. You don't get funded for a competency-based system. You get funded for a seat-time-based system with some competencies layered on. But you can move to a competency-based system today. There's nothing prohibitive.
Okay, I'll go back and ask the question I asked earlier. Is the consensus of the board to move forward, asking the coordinating council to at least take the lead on this work, knowing we'll have work groups, knowing we need to involve, you know, various entities? Like Randy mentioned, we have the Board of Regents, we have Kansas Chamber, and will weave in the technical college, the community colleges and the private colleges? Some, however that needs to be weaved in. And then, but bring work back to all of our various groups. Because it's no easy task. It's not going to be an easy task. Is it worthwhile? I guess I think it is. But is there kind of a consensus from folks? Either head nods or thumbs up, or I see Mr. Porter gave me a thumbs up. Got one from Anne. So if you're okay, okay, looks like people, pretty consensus to go ahead. So we're going to, we'll move ahead on that. And we are meeting this afternoon. I don't know that we'll have, we'll maybe have a little bit of discussion on this, but not a lot, the coordinating council is. And so we'll be regularly communicating with the board. And I'm sure they'll be regular communicating with K-Bor and other entities. Okay, Randy, any last thoughts?
Yeah, I just, I hope that you can see where the redesign efforts are trying to pull all this together and help people see a new system. We have to have enough examples. I hope that you also can articulate this to parents, koalas, when we go out. Because it's hard to imagine something different if you don't have the schema to imagine it. But I, we're making progress. We have to accelerate the progress. And that doesn't mean we just, tomorrow, we pull the plug and plug in something new. But we've got to accelerate the parts that lead us down the road that you want to get to faster.
You know, I think if you just think of these two stories that Janet shared and Brad shared about their own kids, and, I mean, I can go back to when mine graduated a few years ago. And my kids could have used something a little different. And, you know, using something a little different may require us to think a little differently about some things. But, you know, I can just think of the, of the post-secondary credits that we could, expansion of the dual-credit system that we have and what a benefit that would be right there to students. You know, if we could figure out some ways to do that a little more efficiently. I kind of think of some of those things that could be some pretty immediate impacts. So we'll bring back that information as we continue to work on that. And for the good of the order today, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, those of you on Zoom, thank you today. Appreciate you being with us electronically.